Okay, Planning Board meeting is now open, October 2nd. First thing on the agenda, public hearing and zoning amendments. John?
Yeah, I'm having hearings on five different zoning amendments that the board previously had before it, three of which the planning board agreed to sponsor. The first, the first one up tonight is one of those that the planning board agreed to, I'm sorry, the planning board's not sponsoring this one. Dennis Machado, the previous building commissioner, is sponsoring this one. It's the rezoning, amendment article 3.2, to rezone a portion of lots 11 and 12.
John?
Yes.
Before you go any further, I should probably read the public hearing notice.
He's got a, I'm sorry, guys.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Several amendments to the Rayham zoning bylaws, on section 6.2, nonconforming uses and structures. Summarize this thing. And basically what it is, a minimum lot front yard side yard, shall not apply to single or two families. Basically what this does is it, it grandfathers lots in, so when they get approved at the time, a particular zoning is in effect, they grandfathered in, so zoning changes years down the line, you know, you're saving a lot for your child or something like that. It doesn't affect you when you don't have to, you don't lose the lot. So it's just basically grandfathering in lots that were created through the subdivision control process.
Is that the first one?
That's the first one. Second one is section 13.8d, site plan approval, for multifamily developments that contain multiple buildings where the developer wishes to seek permanent occupancy permits for each building separately, the planning board can authorize the issuance of permanent occupancy permits. The way the law reads now is you can't get an occupancy permit and say you have 10 apartment buildings, you can't get an occupancy permit till you build all 10. All this does is let you get occupancy permits on the buildings as you go along. The other amendment, section 5.1, minimum front yard, minimum requirements. It basically is a minimum front yard to be measured from the center line of the travel way, it's just a housekeeping definition on where you measure your front yard setback Amend section 6.6, 6.9, signs requiring permits, or temporary signs don't require permits, or just it basically just temporary signs, it allows you a certain size, 15 square feet, and it allows you to use a temporary sign or banner for a period of no more than 30 The last one would be section 3.2 zoning map, is this the one we're not sponsoring?
That's, yeah, that's the rezoning, that's the rezoning of lots 11 and 12 on Britton Street.
Yeah, this is the one the building commissioner is sponsoring. What it does is it, if any of you are familiar with the old Charlie Dyer property, when you turn heading south on 138, turn right on Britton, it's the property right to the right with a big gravel parking lot and a stone wall. Zoning for business is 250 feet off 138. Presently, what this would do was encompass that entire parcel, which brings it beyond the 250 feet, 250 feet off Broadway, and so it would rezone, you know, the old Dyer Oil site, which is bisected by a business in a residential line, it would make the parcel entirely business.
Okay. Okay, I'll take them in order that Chris read them in. The first one is article 6.2, nonconforming uses, structures, and lots. This is one that the board had discussed previously in past years about offering zoning protection, dimensional regulation protection to lots that are approved through the independent plan process, or the A and R process, or a lot that has already been shown on a deed previously. Right now, the subdivision control law offers, I believe, eight-year protection, two-dimensional regulations on lots, if they're approved as part of a subdivision, there's no such protection at all on A and R lots. And so what this would do, like Chris started to explain, is someone who wants to get approved for a subdivision or an A and R lot, if they don't want to develop that lot right away, they want to hold on to it, as long as they conform with the dimensional requirements at the time they were approved, then they should be okay to, those dimensional requirements apply whenever they choose to build on that property.
Now, why don't we take these one at a time, so I can see if anybody in the audience has any questions about it? If you do, raise your hand, and I will. Can I explain it a little differently? Bert?
Hello, Joe. If someone has a piece of land, they're willing to cut a lot off of it, and they want to protect it, make sure it's a buildable lot, they can do so by creating a plan. In an exchange for that, they will pay taxes on a buildable lot, and if they don't build on it for 10 years, the town is making some extra money.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Board, Russ? Chris? Make a motion that we recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second one.
Second one, this is one that, again, the board had, have been talking about for a little while, as Chris started to explain again. Right now, when there's a multifamily, whether it be apartments or condos, when a multifamily development goes in the way the regulations are right now, as Chris said, say there are 10 buildings in the project, the developer has to wait until all 10 buildings are complete before he goes for any certificates of occupancy. This is one that the building commissioner also supports. He believes that if someone has multiple buildings for a multifamily development, that there's no harm in letting them get occupancy permits for each building as they go, because they have to meet the same standards, they still have to provide as-built plans, and they still have to build it consistent with the plan. So it doesn't change what they're asked to do, it just allows them to get occupancy permits for the different phases instead of the whole thing at the end, so.
Is there anybody here? Questions on the second one? No? Make a motion that we recommend, second. Any discussion?
All in favor? Aye.
Third one, article 5.1, this is a housekeeping article, as, as the former building commissioner, Dennis Machado, and I were doing some research and some background work on another zoning bylaw amendment, we noticed that section 5.1 is a little bit confusing when it comes to the dimensional table and the references below. So this would simply clarify that, to state that, you know, subsections A, B, C, and D below the table refer to the minimum lot and yard dimensions shown in the above table, because it's kind of confusing when you read it, it doesn't, it's not clear that that's the case. And to item B, right now, it, the sentence simply starts, this reference to the table says, "to be measured from the right-of-way line where a plan..." dot, 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 "where a plan of the way is on file with the registry of deeds." It doesn't say what it is, so we're adding in the language, "the minimum front yard setback to be measured from." So again, it's a clarification article.
Okay, anybody in the audience have questions? Yes, sir, state your name for the minimum setback. Could you state your name for the record?
Russell Moser, 69 Paddock Road.
So, okay.
45, this is front yard, 20 is your side, 20 is your rear.
And it's measured from the center of the road, or where's it measured from?
No, it's measured from your property line.
The right-of-way, the right-of-way line.
It's the right-of-way line, so like paddock.
We have a sidewalk right now, but there is a setback that we have to do, so it's from the setback back?
Yeah, it's like that, paddock road's a 50-foot way.
Okay.
So assuming the center, you'd come 25 feet off the center of the way, you'd 55 feet ago from there.
Got it. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, members of the board, questions? Make a motion that the board recommend, second. All in favor?
Aye.
This next one, in reference to temporary signs, after discussion with the present building commissioner today, and in consultation with the previous building commissioner, this one is actually going to be withdrawn, because they actually want to go back and take a look at this, and not just add the sentence that's being proposed, but maybe rework the whole temporary sign paragraph. So they're asking that this get withdrawn, so the planning board doesn't.
So now, is this still going on the ballot, or is it not?
It's, it's on the warrant, it's already been put on the warrant, but it's going to be withdrawn.
Okay.
For further study.
So we're not going to vote on it?
Well, do we still have to recommend or not?
Not if it's going to be withdrawn at the, at the town meeting.
All right.
No action taken?
No action. Finally, the last one read is the rezoning of the rear portion of, a portion of lots 11 and 12, otherwise known as 252 Britton Street. As Chris stated, the lot is currently split zoned diagonally, the front part is business and the rear is residential A, and the proposal is to rezone the entire parcel to business.
Is there anybody in the audience has questions on that rezoning on Broadway? No, members of the board? Now, this one here is, we're recommending, or we're...
Recommended here.
Okay, so this wasn't brought up from the board, this was...
This was actually the building commissioner, former building commissioner's going to sponsor this one.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, 138's been a tough area, so I mean to, I'm not quick to jump on zigzagging the zone line from where it is, no. So I'm probably going to just stay out of this one at this time, and I'm staying for it.
What was the purpose of this?
It was basically to rezone, there's a parcel of land that was Dyer Oil, up on Britton Street, corner of Britton and Broadway.
This is for...
So instead of the 250 foot from the Broadway, it would zigzag the zone line to cater to the one parcel.
Do we have no opposition, there's one neighbor spoke in favor of it?
Yeah, I don't know what the neighbors felt, but, you know, I don't, it's kind of a remote piece that doesn't really encroach into residential that much, it's just going to be a building, but...
I think making that entire lot business, majority of lot of it, across 138, it's always been a business, it's been operating as a business, I'd be in favor of it.
No. Anybody else covet?
No comment.
Russ? I make a motion that we...
Recommend.
Recommend. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, some...
So four and one abstained. Okay, is that it? For you? All right, next on our agenda, public hearing, Bassett Knoll. Whoever's here for Bassett Knoll, engineer, applicant?
We need to read in public.
All right, yep, we will.
Yeah, I'm actually, Mr. Harris, who's the applicant, is discussing some land deal with my sister off the end of Bayberry Road, it's at the remote end, it's not part of what's in front of us here, but it is part of the parcel. He's talking about moving a road or possibly buying land, I don't know if they have any deal yet, I don't think they do, but, so I'm going to stay out of this one.
Do you have a financial interest in that, or just your sister?
My sister does, I don't, you know.
Now, if you abstain, you're going to abstain from the entire process, if you abstain from the first, right off the bat?
Well, this, this is the piece off Locust, she's way off Bayberry.
This is off the 30 lot.
And...
Please.
Yeah, I just, I mean, it's, if it has the, if there's any possible impropriety, or whatever they call it, might take a chance.
Oh, is there any appearance? Right now, I don't see any need for you to abstain, if something comes later on, unless there's something that you're not comfortable with.
Especially a project of this size, I think we're going to be, we're going to be looking for your input. I would ask...
I mean, this has nothing to do with the piece off Bayberry, but it's still part of this parcel.
Yeah, but you have no interest in this.
No, I have no interest in it.
Bert, what's your feeling?
I agree. I want Chris's input on it as we go along on the engineering aspects, and I think you can certainly wait until the time to vote comes along, and if you feel at that point like your sister's good enough to split the money with you, then, then it's time to abstain, but you don't need to start now.
That's my opinion.
Okay, well, I don't usually agree with lawyers, but I'll go with it then.
That's why you're getting so much trouble.
Okay, so read the public hearing notice, and we will continue.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, chapter 40A and 41, sections 81T and 81U, and articles 14 and 16, Rayham zoning bylaws, the Rayham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 2nd, 2014, at 6:10 PM, at Rayham Veterans Memorial Town Hall, 558 South Main Street, to consider application for approval of a definitive plan, application for special permit for open space development, and application for special permit for subdivision phasing for Bassett Knoll Estates, 70 lots on 137 plus or minus acres of land on Locust Street, applicants submitted by Global Construction, Nick Harris, Hyannis, Mass., and Rayham Investment Realty Trust, Claire Harris, Wes Yarmouth, Mass., plan prepared by McKenzie Engineering Group, Norwell, Mass., Locust is Locust Street, Rayham, Mass., assesses map nine parcels, 204, 207, 1B, 207, 9B, 211B, 207, 12 to 14, 207, 17B, 207, 19B, to 3, 38B, 207, 37A, 207, 40B, to 42B, there wasn't a simpler way to write this thing.
I tried.
207, 44B, to 46B, 207 dash 48, 207, 51, 208, 1B, 208B, 209B, 209, 1B, 209, 3B, to 10B, 209, 15B, to 16B, map 10, parcel 6, 31 dash 1B, to 5B, map 12, parcels 219 to 1B, to 10B, 219, 16B, to 19B, and map 13, parcels 31 dash AB, 8B, to 11B, and 4, and map 13, parcel 40. That was a drag. Copy of application and plan are available for viewing at the town clerk's office and planning board office during usual scheduled business hours. Any person wishing to be heard or interested in this submittal should appear at the time and place designated. Rayham Planning Board, Daniel Andrade, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Now, if, does anybody have issues with Chris sitting on the board? Did everybody hear his comments about possible piece of land possibly being purchased off his sister, has nothing to do with this piece, but he was concerned that there may be a conflict down the road, so he's just bringing that up. Is there anybody in the audience that has a problem with that, him sitting on the meetings? Does the applicant have a problem with any of that? Okay. All right, with that said, Maureen, I don't have a niche.
I know.
Do you?
Yes, everybody, yes.
Everybody but me? That was, yeah, that was this afternoon, I didn't want one.
No, that's the deal.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Do you have a plan that shows the bigger piece? Overall development plan?
Yes, do you have it? Would you like to do that?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like him to give a little overview, especially for the people at home.
All right, I can use that plan first.
And remember that it's on television, and the people are looking at this little TV screen, and...
I don't see much of that.
Could I see that for a minute? Is that the most appropriate location for the board? Yes.
Just, so, what I was discussing about my sister, she's right around there. On the end of Bayberry, and Mr. Head, and she owns all this land here, and that's what they'd be dealing with. Tonight, we're dealing with this whole section, pretty much what you see that's outlined in the white. This is all wetland, so this project is limited to this portion. It also, I think, included part of the end of Paddock Road, which, years ago, I worked on this project.
I don't, I got to stop you for a minute. Should we ask Wayne if there's a better spot? Who's here for this?
No, he's here.
All right, so the whole, everybody's here to see this, so, that's it? That's the spot?
Is there any way it could go over towards the front somewhere?
Can I, can I just turn it sideways, Wayne? Just a little, and we can slide that podium back a little bit, so, you slide the podium back, and maybe just, just turn that a little bit, and I'll, when Wayne waves, I'll stop. All right, good, stop, stop. Yep. All right. Focus on that map, Wayne, and see if, you're good? Okay, so, everybody that, that's here, hopefully you can see a little better, I will go around the whole room, once we get to asking questions, people's input, you don't have to worry, you, if you're here to be heard, you will be heard. This is something that will be, a lot of information that will be presented, and I think it will be, we'll decide whether or not this is going to be continued, and how we're going to proceed with that, so, all right. That was the one you wanted to see, Bert?
After you give your name, if you could point out all the roads around here, so, again, people at home will know where we're talking about in town.
So I don't want to interrupt you, I just want to...
For the record, I'm Scott Henderson with McKenzie Engineering Group, consulting civil engineers, here with me tonight, as well as Bradley McKenzie, President and Principal of McKenzie Engineering. The applicant, Nick Harris, of Global Construction, was unable to attend tonight, he had a prior family engagement, sends his regrets. I'll start with an overview of the location of the project here, as requested. The project site tonight is a, a portion of property located here off of Locust Street. It's a portion of Locust Street, approximately half a mile south of the intersection of Locust and Pleasant Street, and approximately half a mile to the east of the project site is 495. Other roads nearby include Paddock Road, Ramshead Road, and Bayberry Road, for reference, so those are the closest intersections. It's also fairly close to the intersection of Pleasant Street and Route 24 overpass.
Thank you. Okay, so, how we are going to proceed, first, did Highway send in a letter?
No.
Okay. He didn't send in? Okay.
Yeah, it was a lengthy letter from the engineer.
Yeah, we had, we received a letter. Did you receive a letter from...
Received it today around 4:00 PM, yes.
All right. It is... One, two, three, four.
10 pages.
How many pages?
10, I believe.
10. We have 10 pages of detailed information that, detailed information that our engineer is bringing up and asking questions and needs additional information.
Yes.
Our town highway superintendent asked to, he has not had the size of the project, all the comments, all the waiver requests, he has not had sufficient time at this point to give us his recommendations and his comments.
Okay.
And, so, I'm, I'm really not myself, until I see Highway Department, his information...
I, I would suggest we have all our members, so, they can, they can give testimony.
No, no.
We have a lot of people here, so they might as well get an overview, and I don't think we can do much past that tonight.
Right, and normally, just, just so you know, normally, it's been my position that if there's 15 items on a list from our engineer that need to be addressed, we automatically continue it. Because what happens is, for us to go through every one of these, and then have our engineer go through every one with you, and then John gets involved, it's just a lot of, there's an awful lot of work in here that needs to be done before you even...
We'd also prefer that chance to, to address the comments in the letter, we've barely had a chance to really read over it, so, we agree that an overview is the best.
And again, I think when this was put on as a far public hearing notice, obviously everybody, you know, felt they would have enough time to, to review and get their, get their input, and so, so again, I'm not sure how you would...
Well, I think give an overview, so the neighbors know what it's about. We have an engineer who goes out and reviews their engineering work, and he's got 10 pages worth of comments, so the engineers really need to sit down and talk this out, and go over figures together before we can really deal with the, the real nitty-gritty of this. So I think just a general overview tonight, so people know what it's all about.
Do I give them a, what the process is, or what...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's fine, we can do that. And why, why it's important for this, all of this information, 10 pages? We could be going back, we cannot answer your questions properly when we have all these questions ourself. Our engineer, who works for the town, he's hired an independent, he's an independent engineer who we hire, has all these questions, so if our engineer has all these questions, then we don't, we can't even comment on it. I mean, it's that simple, because there's just, there's just way too many issues that need to be addressed. Once these, this gets narrowed down between the applicant and the town engineer, usually there's, first thing we're going to have is, we'll have a waiver list, they're going to be asking for waivers, and there was quite a few waivers that they were asking for, that generally would come back in front of the board. And if the applicant and the town engineer disagree with any of these, it's not the, it's not the engineer to make the decision that the board's responsible for making. So if they disagree, they have every right to bring that in front of us for our opinion, and for our vote on it. But, so at this time, I think there's just way too many, there's way too many items that are on here. Chris can explain the process between cluster development and what they're presenting and what they're coming forward to do, so maybe that would, before I get to, Chris, you had your hand up, was there...
I have a question for you. If we're going to delay this...
Could you state your name for the record?
I'm Jacqueline from Paddock Road.
Okay.
If you're going to delay this because you have these questions, which I agree with, will we be notified every time there's a meeting? Or...
No, no. No. You will, if you're here, I will continue the hearing and give a date and a time before you, we, before we're done. So you will know, so if neighbors show up and you're not able, or if a neighbor's not able to come here, yes, John?
Also, these meetings are televised.
Right.
Yeah, so, if you can't make it, these meetings are televised on local cable.
Yeah, but there's nothing like really being here.
Oh, yeah. Trust me, there's nothing like really being here. So, we, you will know, all the neighbors, whoever's here will know that, you know, the hearing, the next hearing date.
Perhaps we could take a few limited questions from the residents tonight.
I was going to give an overview of the process.
Yeah, let, let Chris do his overview first, and then we'll...
Listen, what, what they're applying for is what's called a cluster development. So first, they come in, and, do you have the byright plan with you, or no? First, they come in, and the property that's delineated, you know, by pa, back of Paddock Road, and this whole section, the Locust Street, exclusive of this section of the development, they come in and show us that they can get so many lots on it and meet conventional zoning, which is 40,000 square foot lot size, and meet our roadway requirements and drainage areas and all that. They came in and did that, and it came out that they could get 64 lots, there was, I think, 60 in this area here, and then there was the wetlands divide the Paddock Road section from the Locust Street section. The end of Paddock Road had a small cul-de-sac approved with like four lots that never got built. So they took the 64 lots, and then with the bylaw, you get this affordable housing lot, one for every 10, and you can pay money towards the Rayham Housing Authority to get that extra on, and then, which is how they come up with their 70, but so, what they're proposing to do is to... they're proposing to do is to not do anything at the end of Paddock Road where the four lots would have been.
Let's just show them.
And that would be, so they use that for their number, to get their number of lots. Then they come in, after they can show they can get X number of lots in a conventional plan with forty thousand square feet, now they can do that same number of lots, only with lots that are half the size, at twenty thousand square feet, similar to what, like Whip Will Woods down the street, that was a cluster. So, he gets his number, and he comes back in, and, so this whole parcel is gonna be, wants to be developed with this proposal that he has in front, and the rest of it would end up open space or recreation or something like that, go into wildlands, trust the, to town. So, the end of Paddock Road basically stay the same, the only thing that would change there is I think they're gonna have a new sewer pump station, maybe moving it on to their property, I believe, I haven't seen the, you know, haven't gone through the design plans yet. And what they end up with is that, the plan they have down bottom, if you could lift that up and put it up top. So this is what their actual proposal would be on that entire parcel of land exclusive of the piece by Bayberry Road, and that would be a total different filing. So this is what the proposal is, they showed us that they could get the amount of lots, and we recently, we agreed with it, and now they come in with this, and they need a special permit from us to get this, and it has to meet all the design standards of Planning Board rules and regulations, and the zoning that applies to a cluster. And so now, we're gonna go through that process and go back and forth for a while, and try to address anybody's questions, and try to ensure that their design is compliant with all the rules and regulations of Rainham.
Can you explain just what the white spot is?
The white spot is all the frontage lots. These were all, this was all Joe Wilson's land right here, which was the peach orchard. These pieces here were actually lots that were from this mother piece, when Jerry Kelleher owned it, he deeded out these frontage lots. And this section right here, that's the road that you see that's cut in with the logs, this section, the road's not cut in yet, but that's where they're extending the sewer right over here. So that's, the proposal is to have that where the road's cut in now, an entrance there, and then the other entrance past the old peach orchard lots.
So, the white area, is that built?
That's all houses, almost all.
All houses, a lot now?
I don't know if, you, the Wilson's lots aren't all built out, there's one left, one that's not. But Joe was nice enough to cut them all off, give them to all of his nephews and nieces, and then move off his own land.
Okay, so, with, with that said, Chris made a comment that they came in front of us and they got our approval. We only gave them an approval to come back in front of us as a cluster developer. They showed us that they had enough land to do the amount of lots that they're showing in a cluster. So that's the approval, there was, you didn't miss anything, there's no, they can't go out and build it, now it just gives them the right to come back in front of us, have a public hearing, and present a cluster development. So I just wanted to make sure we understood that. So I think it might be a good idea, like Henry said, is just maybe ask, who has questions? What are the concerns? That way they're, the applicant can also hear, and I think it'll be a good thing for them to understand, you know, what's in front of them. Yes, sir. Again, state your name for the record?
Rich Maclean from Paddock Road.
Yep.
So as I understand, what I just saw, there's nothing that's gonna be done to Paddock Road itself, no egress or access to this whole development?
No, no, what, the only Paddock Road work would be sewer related, from what I understand, is that correct?
I am correct.
So the end of Paddock Road, there's not gonna be houses on the end of it.
Will, will, will it eventually be developed into the cul-de-sac that was supposed to be developed?
Um.
Maybe you could...
Not with this proposal, but that's...
Maybe you can answer that part?
Ken, would you like me to go through an overview of the whole project, or just the individual?
No, let's say, let's answer the question of what he's, what he's saying, and...
The only, the only work proposed at the end of Paddock Road, I don't know if you know where the existing pump station is?
Yes.
There will be a replacement pump station, moved and located on our property. So the end of Paddock Road is located here, and the pump station's currently off of this Locust property. We'll be replacing it with a new pump station on our property, but this space here is counted as open space as part of the proposal. So, there will be no development there, and there won't be allowed to be a development there.
Now, how about the turnaround, the cul-de-sac that was originally proposed, I think he's asking the question?
We, we have no intent to...
That could maybe be worked into the pump station design, because there was supposed to be a turnaround there, in fact, when Federoff did that pump station, he was supposed to do a turnaround, and he never did it.
Is that a fire turnaround?
Right now, there's nothing, right now, it's just the width of the road, I think to twenty-eight feet, and there should be something.
Yeah, there should be something.
Yes, as it stands, as it stands now in the winter, it's, it's a riot to watch the plows, plow down, and then back up, and plow down, and back up, and I've always worried if there's a fire, they're not gonna be able to get down there and turn around. And I've, I've lived on that road twenty-two years.
Do you have any, any plans, you said the pump station is gonna be moved?
We, we don't have design plans, specific design plans submitted to the Sewer Commission yet for the design of that pump station. As part of that, we can work out, you know, the construction of a hammerhead, paved hammerhead for turnaround, if that's necessary within that area, but that's not...
The other, the other thing too, is, has this been through the fire, fire chief? Cause I don't see any letters from...
We did, we had a, a pre-application design review meeting a week or two ago, and the fire chief was there, but you're right, we haven't received any, any comment from them on that.
I would, you know, now's the time to, basically, I would say Paddock Road was never completed, so, you know, this is, this really is the extension, the continuation of all of the original land, I guess, so, maybe it's something that we can...
I'll reach out to the fire chief.
We can find out, cause after this, he's not, you know, we're never gonna get a turnaround or a cul-de-sac or anything else, so. Yes, sir, state your name?
Peter Amy from Paddock Road. I was at a Sewer Commissioner's meeting about a little over a year ago, and Federoff had left the bond, and at that time, they talked about that the bond was turned over, I was, I mean, he turned it over to the town to, at that time, house that pumping station.
Yeah.
But when, or to fix that cul-de-sac, or complete that cul-de-sac, you're also missing a fire height at the end of, your line, your line ends there, but there's no fire.
So there was a bond, and he's...
It was designed for a fire plug.
There was eighty-three thousand dollars in that bond, so it's probably a little more now with interest. The highway department also has an additional fifteen, sixteen thousand, so there's a hundred thousand dollars there. And now was to upgrade the station to a full station, which is, is about a half a million dollars, so it wasn't nearly enough to do it. So, I'm sewer superintendent for now, and the plan, we've been waiting for these plans to come in without throwing our money in, but that money is available to upgrade Paddock and that cul-de-sac. If they're gonna do a pump station, they're gonna do a full-blown, like a pump station like you see on White Street or any other pump stations in town, moving on to their property. But I agree with Dan, I mean, now's the time that you're gonna get your cul-de-sac, but there is money's available with sewer and with highway that could join in to work on Paddock Road and work on a turnaround, and would, I'm sure we could somehow negotiate here to get something done there, and it should be, you know, this is the time to get it done.
Well, that's good information, thank you. With that said, we do have a new highway department, highway superintendent, can you let him know, and just make him aware that? How much did you say? Do you remember?
There wasn't much, it was in the teens, and, and...
So as far as...
Well, you, you know the bond, right?
Oh, our bond, it's small.
It's small, it's not much, but with the both of them, it's probably on the order of about a hundred grand.
All right, now when you say our bond, is, do we have the bond, or is this...
The planning board has no bonds.
Okay.
It's money left over from bond that was taken.
It was a bond that was taken for Paddock when John Carnish jumped ship and died.
So, the bond that is with this, is with the Sewer Commission, correct?
Yeah, and the, the money with the Sewer Commission, we actually put it in the form of an article to appropriate it, to upgrade the station, I don't know if we turned the money back in, but we haven't done any upgrades, you know, waiting to see what's gonna happen here.
Okay.
If this comes and has the upgrades, we have the eighty-three grand of the bond.
So the remainder, the other fifteen or so thousand dollars, are we holding it, the planning board, or is the highway department holding it?
More or less, we have it, so, maybe you can find out exactly what that amount, that amount is, just so we have it for...
I think it's about thirteen.
So we have it for next year.
I don't have to fund it.
Okay. So, thank you for that, so, again, for, those things are, are helpful for us, helpful for the, obviously the applicant, because this is, like I said, this is gonna be our only chance.
That, that parcel at the end of Paddock Road was originally parceled out for, what, three lots or whatever? And that, you're saying now that's become open land?
Open space, or...
Open space.
Once the pump station is done and a cul-de-sac or whatever.
Yeah, but what is, quote, does that mean, as far as what could be done on those three lots later?
Nothing, nothing.
Nothing, they can't be built on.
And once they're locked out, if this plan's approved, they're locked out.
Right.
So that will truly be end, cul-de-sac with no building at that, that...
Just a pump station. There'd be a conservation restriction.
There'd be a conservation restriction, and...
Perpetuity for...
That's a plus for me and everybody else who lives on the streets, so, it's interesting, and it's important to notice.
Yes, sir, state your name?
It was Steve Blake, also on Paddock Road. So what you're saying is there's some kind of a ratio to how much, they have to buy a certain amount, let's say seventy lots, they can only build that X number of acres, the rest gets permanently locked in as conservation area, or?
Exactly.
Forty percent of the same. And they would have to come back, somebody would have to come back to the board to get some kind of a waiver to actually do anything with that land?
No, no, not, not just that. The whole thing is, these will be going down to one-hundred-foot frontage, and to be able to do that, the land that they're not using is gonna be going into a preserved land. That's the whole, that's the whole concept. It shortens up the road length, it shortens up the, the maintenance for the town for the future, and they're not gonna be using up as much land, so all of the land, normally they're supposed to have forty thousand square feet, so for every lot, there's gonna be twenty thousand square feet preserved. So that's where, that's how the calculation comes in, and that's, they're taking, obviously Paddock Road, the end of Paddock Road, they're taking all that land into the calculation of the preserved part. Yes, John?
Just quickly, then, help me answer the question, um, in order to remove a piece of land from a permanent conservation restriction, from what I understand, in speaking to conservation agents, the town, not, it wouldn't be the town alone that could remove that restriction, it would have to go to the state level, I believe a two-thirds vote of the state legislature would have to be attained in order to remove a conservation restriction.
And if you remove it, in order to remove it, you have to replace it with a like-kind area, so it's not, it's not as easy to remove.
It's not something that's really gonna, you know, I think once, once, if, if the whole project is approved through this process, I, I think you're pretty confident that it's gonna stay.
And is that conservation area deeded back to the town or the state, or is it still available?
That's something that will be, we will work out, because we do have to have a, they have to have an answer of what they're gonna, is it gonna be a conservation restriction, is it gonna be for the association? Yes, Burke?
Could be a homeowners association.
They could put some walking trails in there, or it could be the town, or it could specifically be Conservation Commission.
Yes, I was wondering if it can be available to public.
It could also be another organization.
Regardless of the entity, the restriction will remain in place, I mean, doesn't, they could keep it themselves to own it.
Right. So, yes, ma'am?
It's hardly Paddock Road. You mentioned this is the initial phase, and there's a Bayberry phase or section, can you speak to that, and how that's gonna affect our neighbors on the other side?
That is actually, this whole thing was an approved subdivision years ago, and, so it's actually still an approved subdivision, only the Bayberry section is this piece here, this P that you see, and the end of Bayberry was to continue with a P, it had never got So, that's gonna be a proposal for another day, where he's gonna come back with that proposal, and try to extend Bayberry. But there's certain issues, I think, with dead-end limits and this type of thing, that it may not be what it used to be. When the subdivision was originally proposed, it had a road that continued and connected to Paddock, and it actually had a road that went across and connected here, so there was a, a throughway, but the wetlands and the change in the subdivision plan, that's not happening now. But that is gonna come back for Bayberry.
We haven't seen, we haven't seen...
That's gonna add, that's gonna add, if it does come back, it's gonna add some lots.
Any of the plans, or had, nothing for that has been presented.
And again, with that, if they have different entities that own this, you're only gonna get a few people that are gonna get notified, so you're not gonna get how, it depends how the thing's broken up, but you might not get the same notification as the, with the mother piece.
Okay, Burke, we have an outstanding approved subdivision, we should clean up and have, and revoke that approval, so we can start clean with this one?
That's a good idea, yeah. In other words, just saying, through this process, we rescind that subdivision that's outstanding as part of this?
I don't know whether you can do that.
Well, it, we can, because that subdivision is the whole piece. It's not that Bayberry's not a separate subdivision, that's not a separate approved subdivision. The subdivision that's approved is the entire parcel, that's part of it, but this is all part of it too.
And I don't, well, I don't want approved roads in two different locations.
Yeah, it's not, the Bayberry section was at, part of the original approved subdivision, so we're dealing with modifying, I guess it would be maybe a modification of what we're doing, in a way.
But it's, but it's before us, even though it's two...
I know it's not before us, but I think it ought to be before us. When people go to do titles, you got a subdivision that says you got a road running here, and now you get a subdivision where you wanna put a house right on where the road is, that's an issue.
Yeah, I'd agree with it.
But I don't, I don't think that that's what they're doing over there, it's a, it's already a pre-approved subdivision on paper.
Yeah.
And, and ought for them to build one house on a, on an existing road, they're gonna have to do a new plan, have it recorded, and basically that subdivision would have to go away.
Maybe you should run it by town council.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, myself, I'm not comfortable saying, let's rescind all of that, because I, I don't know if it's getting into...
We didn't file it as a modification, because the change is, it's a gross change from a conventional to an open space plan, it's, there's nothing similar about it.
But you're gonna have two outstanding approvals, you hope, on the same piece of land for two different plans, putting roads in two different places.
In other words, by, by modifying it so much, you eliminated your approval of that section, you would think. I mean, that's, that's part of the subdivision, so if you're modifying it that much...
This, this filing, as you said, is only for this, we'll call it a hundred and thirty-seven acre portion.
Right.
And the other approval was for the whole thing.
I know, but by modifying a section, three-quarters of your subdivision, that gets rid of that one too.
Now, wait, 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 let's just, so we all understand what we're...
I think that's a cleaner way to do it.
That, that piece that's up in the top there, that was originally approved with this entire piece, including the piece that we're talking about, that's not a separate, the way it's being shown is like a separate little subdivision.
Well, those are existing parcels, so they were approved and recorded, so those are existing.
Yeah, but it was part of an approved subdivision.
My understanding was there was, there was more than one approval, right? As well?
There was only one, there was only one, I worked on this project years ago, when Jerry Kelleher owned it back in the early nineties, it was GHR was an engineering firm that had gone belly up, they had originally designed it, and they had a hundred and thirty lot development, including both sections, so it was on one approval on one plan. My work was limited to laying out the roads that could cut in with Jerry and his son, and, and then the zoning changed from thirty thousand to forty thousand, and I did a plan that moved all the lot lines and lost a bunch of lots to make it forty thousand square foot lots, but never once did I change the interior part of that subdivision, I did a minor modification at the end of Paddock, and that was it.
Now, I have, I have a question for you, Burke, if this piece, or this area that they're working with, you can have one subdivision and have some of the lots in cluster and some not in cluster, so, by doing that, wouldn't that still, wouldn't this still qualify? Because why would you rescind?
Well, can you come over with that plan?
You wanna see the plan?
Yeah, yeah, let me get over here. What I'm saying is, if the old plan shows the road going right through here, so you got a subdivision approved to put a road right there, now you have this new plan, and you wanna put houses there, you got a problem, cause you've got an approved road running through where somebody... 'cause you've got an approved road running through where somebody wants to put a row of houses.
Yeah, I agree. So, you just have to rescind the whole subdivision.
Just get, get rid of the old one and start with a clean slate.
I'm not sure you can do that until this plan's approved.
We'll do it together. I don't have a problem with that.
It could be an addition for approval, but, you know, there, there are seventy odd, sixty odd lots within that perimeter of that, the owner, whoever the owner is, it's changed, okay, because we're paying taxes on it for a year.
So, please, don't do that. All right?
I'd be a rears.
Can you find, maybe answer the question for us, when you do your, check to see how many approvals that this was, this was put through? Was this all as one approval?
It was done back in eighty-six, and then I did one minor modification at the end of Paddock to make it a small cul-de-sac with four lots. I've had similar situations on subdivisions I've done in other towns, and that's exactly what we did, was we had an old subdivision, wetland lines moved, all this stuff changes, so now you come in, you're gonna meet the new rules, you're moving roadways, and we, in, in all cases that I had, in that case, we rescinded the subdivision simultaneously with the approval of it.
The way Burke has, you know, explained it, I, I agree with that. I'm just wondering, if that is the case, and they're gonna lose that upper piece, then they may wanna come in with some, whatever they're gonna do up there and update that, even though they're not planning on developing it, but have that as part of the plan.
Yeah, I'm not asking them not to protect themselves.
Okay, so, you're, you're looking for issues that may be down the road for, and I think what Chris said, and, and we would do that at the end. That would be something done at the end.
It'd be a potential.
Yeah, but can you still find out for us, 'cause this has been for years, how many, you know, approvals, just so we all know? All right? Yes, did you have your hand up?
Yes, John Cameron, Locust Street.
Yes.
Do we show where four ninety-five and Locust Street is? Where is Pine Street on this map?
Pine?
It's a back, keep four, four ninety-five, and there's, there's detail inside the subdivision, you know? Pine Street goes down Everett, and it comes up the backside of four ninety-five. It directly abuts the back. It's just a pig farm on it down the very end of it, but four ninety-five.
Oh, Duane Ounches?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on the other side of four ninety-five. See this piece? Couple of these pieces were actually houses that fronted on Pine Street, and when the highway came in, they sliced them off. But that Pine Street, you'd have to keep going, you know, here's Locust and Pleasant, go past Old Farm Village, keep going down Pleasant, pass the highway, and right here is that fifty-five and over thing right there?
Say, where's Berry Hill?
Berry Hill's right there, on the other side of the highway.
So, the one of the subdivision, kind of like Everett Street, that comes down to our Leonard Farms, you make a left when you hit the highway down, there's a road down there.
That Pine Street, oh, okay, you're talking of Bullock's Farm. That's way out in the back, way, way out. But that, these woods go to that piece.
Yes.
They back up to it, yeah.
They showed us where everything was, but they didn't show us where the Pine Street section of.
It's quite a ways away.
But this is all open land that goes right back to Pine Street that they own, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, it's quite, this, it's quite a ways back.
Let's all be in.
This is all Whipplewell. This section's Whipplewell.
The limit of our ownership is this bold line here. So, everything back here is well outside of sort of the realm of this project.
And there's pieces back here that were part of Pine, they're landlocked pieces that were part of Pine Street.
It doesn't even.
But that's quite a ways away.
They showed us where, as I just did. No, just lay on a button that, that street.
And there was a, there was a comment, or, I don't know if I would identify that as a comment, but there was a chuckle about taxes. And we are not allowed to even hear a plan, and that's a town rule. We don't look at plans or review plans unless taxes are up to date. And. You are aware they're not up to date on this parcel? I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you know what was done. There's five hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifteen cents. That says, per my conversation, Nick Harris, on Monday, September twenty-ninth, he agrees to pay off the entire debt on the day of the closing. This agreement is only binding until October thirty-first. After such day, new agreement will need to be done. And he did this with the tax collector of the town aranium. That's how and why we're able to have this in front of us, because this plan, if it gets approved, five hundred and twenty-four thousand and change will be paid. If it doesn't get paid, the plan does not get released. So, just so you know, so if anybody has questions about taxes.
That states on closing, on, on plan approval?
Yeah, on, on closing, but.
May want to read.
Yeah, no, it says on, on the closing. Yes, sir?
Hey, Bishop, eight ninety-six Rossbrook Street.
Yes.
So, clearly, you paid the town five hundred thousand in taxes, right, when this is approved? Meantime, we're paying for NITCH. Who pays the NITCH in there?
They do.
They pay it off? Okay.
The town occurs, no expenses.
Okay, well, I think these people, and I wanna know, I thank you for that information. The other thing is, what is the difference when you, you go to a cluster, right? Now, a forty thousand square foot lot taxable, now we've got on a twenty. So, the town, in fact, loses twenty thousand dollars worth of, twenty thousand square feet of taxable land.
Those people will still be charged taxes for forty thousand square feet.
At, at full.
Yes.
Just like it was a house lot.
It doesn't affect their assessments. I mean, if you looked at Whipplewell, and the houses in there, and you looked at houses in a neighborhood, comparable house on a forty thousand square foot lot, they assess value, there's no difference.
And there's a couple of ways that it can be done. But Burke, you're the title guy.
Well, but none of us here are tax assessors. But there's almost no difference. You put the same house on twenty thousand square feet or forty thousand, I think the tax bill's gonna be exactly the same.
Except that if these, now, nothing's gonna come out of Bayberry. They're never gonna exit Bayberry out of that subdivision. I know it's out in the future, but can you, we get that, can they come in and out of Bayberry out of the next phase?
The Locust Street side they're proposing will have absolutely no connection to the Old Farm Village roads.
That at the end.
The end may be extended, and there may be additional lots in the, in the Bayberry.
Traffic will not come out of this whole subdivision?
No, it'll all exit onto the two, two exits on Locust Street.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Questions? Yes, ma'am?
I have, Joanne Kellogg, three eighty Locust Street. I have comments, concerns, and questions. Which would you like first?
We're here to listen to you.
Question. The hundred and thirty-seven acres, what is the remainder on that lot? I see wetlands, but what else is there? What else is provided for?
Open space.
Which entails?
Again, we don't have, we don't have anything at this point, unless he can.
That's part of the.
All right, he will answer that one.
As part of the open space by law requirements, forty percent of the total site must remain open space after development. Of that forty percent, seventy percent must be upland. The total site is a hundred and thirty-seven point seven five acres. We will be providing a total of ninety point one seven acres of contiguous open space, and of that ninety point one seven acres, thirty-nine point zero two acres is upland.
But what do you plan on doing with it?
All of that will be part of the perpetual open space parcel. That will be a conservation restriction. We do have a, parking spaces at the end of the two proposed cul-de-sacs and a walking trail connecting the two.
If you see on this plan, it's highlighted in yellow, so you can see it. So, at the end of that roadway, now Road C, and the end of this roadway, now Road B, there'll be a walking trail through that, along the edge of the wetland line in that open space parcel.
Okay, thank you.
The reason why I asked is I have been in correspondence with Natural Heritage about special concern wildlife there. And in their correspondence with me, they informed me that the developer would put aside a hundred and twenty-five acres for the boxed, eastern box turtle. Where is that hundred and twenty-five acres?
At this point in time, we're in contact with Natural Heritage regarding the endangered species habitat located on the site for the eastern box turtle. That hundred and twenty-five acre number was part of the previously reviewed plans by Natural Heritage that included this parcel, as well as some other parcels that are no longer in play for this proposal. So, that hundred and twenty-five acres is no longer going to be a hundred and twenty-five acres. Natural Heritage has a rubric for addressing endangered species habitats. First thing they look at is perpetual open space. If that's not available, the next step is providing mitigation for that particular species. For the eastern box turtle, those are sand beds that they can nest in during mating season. If we provide a certain square footage of those, that counts towards that open space requirement.
This project is gonna require a conservation management permit from Natural Heritage. As, as a condition for that permit, I'm not sure that one twenty-five is the number. My, our applicant, or, actually, our client has been dealing with Natural Heritage, not us. But whatever they require, they've, they've given a conditional approval for this, this configuration, this layout, with conditions, and the conditions for the final permit will have all the open space having to be put in a CR, which is not a, it's a, I guess it's a, it's an option under, under your bylaw for the, but it's not a requirement under your bylaw for the open space. But this open space, we put in a CR because of Natural Heritage and the conditions.
Okay, so, he made a comment that the original calculations for the hundred and twenty-five acres included the upper piece. Does Natural Heritage, are they aware that that upper piece is not part of this project, but is still plotted out with legal lots?
I think our client's been dealing with them on a global basis and looking at the whole thing in aggregate, that both projects. And there are other parcels that, that are involved, and we're not showing that the applicant has control over.
Yeah, but I'm not, but I'm, it's not the parcels that concerns me. Going back to what Mr. Fountain said, if those upper pieces, those, that upper subdivision that you're showing on this plan that already have an approval on it from years past, if that section of this subdivision is part of that natural, natural heritage of the hundred and twenty-five acres, and you're bringing them a new plan with less lots and not calculating those lots into that, then I think we're.
Well, they've seen, they've seen this plan.
Yes.
They've reviewed this plan over the last year or two.
Okay, are they aware that the other?
They are.
They are?
They are.
So, I guess, then if this.
It may not be that configuration. That is, that is what exists now, I think, on paper, if you would have looked, go to the assessor's office.
All right, so, then I almost think that you're gonna have to give us a calculation. What's the Natural Heritage gonna require for that upper piece?
Well, that's something the, the client's working on with Natural Heritage.
I, I don't know the answer. Do we need to go there, or do we just?
It's a state permit.
Do their thing.
Yeah, it's not relative to what we're approving or disapproving here.
Nothing can be done with this project until they're satisfied.
I mean, that's something that's with conservation more than with us.
It's not even conservation.
No, I know, but I think with conservation, I think they can't, I may be wrong, but I know they used to not move forward on a notice of intent unless you had Natural, Natural Heritage approval.
Yeah, that's happened. That's happened with a couple of them. Yes, John?
Couple, couple of things. I, I just spoke with Natural Heritage yesterday. They said this project is currently under review. Secondly, at the pre-application department meeting, a couple of members of the Concom were there, and they did indeed say that they're, they're gonna wait for Natural Heritage before they move forward on this.
All right. Yes, continue.
I'd like to comment on that. The letter I had received was February last year. So, I don't know if it was this plant that was put to Natural Heritage. I would like to think so, but again, the response to me was a hundred and twenty-five acres. In my correspondence with Natural Heritage, my concern is they're, they were only talking about one specific species of animal that was there, growing up in this area, this, because this property has not been touched other than by hunters or recreation. There's other things there.
I think that, yeah, I think that Mr. Gallagher said, though, that is, that's not this board. That's, that's with them. If they come back, and if they reviewed that, and they review the upper piece as a total package, like it originally was approved, then.
Right, well, just to let these people know, I did tell them in my correspondence that I am asking for a, an onsite certification of what's there, because if you don't know what's there, you're not gonna know what's gone after you give it away.
Okay.
Also, I, I have some concerns. I hear traffic from four ninety-five at four o'clock in the morning. Not the best wake-up call. What is going to be done? When you take a swath of trees that absorb that sound and the carcinogens from the traffic, what are you gonna do to alleviate that noise?
Well, this piece that's in front of us is not impacting that. You're looking at, do you live up on that upper piece?
I live approximately two lots from the south side of the south entrance going in.
Well, you live all the way down there, and you hear four ninety-five traffic?
Yes, oh, yes. At four o'clock in the morning, it's not a pleasant sound. So, I wanna know what is going to be done to, I mean, it's going to be.
I don't, you know, I mean, for us to say that putting, clearing trees and putting houses up, that the noise is gonna be reflecting off of houses to, I mean, that's getting a little.
Well, it's, actually, it's going to just amplify it, because you don't have anything there absorbing it.
Well, you're gonna have that big, wide wetland patch, and you're still gonna have a thousand feet of woods before you get there. And people that are impacted on the highway are the ones over there in Bayberry.
Right.
I mean, you're not, you're, Locust is quite a ways.
I don't think that's, I, I, to be honest with you, I don't think that's something that's gonna be.
Okay, it's something that I have to do. The other thing is, I've heard from other people on the street who have had developments, subdivisions going behind them, that there's been an issue with youngsters trespassing on the property coming through. I don't wanna see my neighbors behind me. I don't wanna hear them. I like the country setting. That's why I moved back here. Are we given any type of?
You're gonna put like kid, kid traps along the property line?
You're gonna have the same.
Like candy items.
They will, they will have the same setback requirements that everybody else in the town has. They have to follow those. Is they're going to be, are we gonna tell them that they can't build, you know, in excess of our current setback requirements? No. It's not something that we're gonna do.
Okay, the other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is, I went online, because I didn't know a lot about this development, and came across a letter from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and it's dated January of last year, and it talks about the traffic impact. And they said with sixty-six single-family homes, they're projecting seven hundred and twenty new average weekday vehicle trips. That's an awful lot of traffic on that part of Locust Street. Locust Street not only absorbs our own residents, we get traffic from King Street, the subdivisions over there, Whipplewell. Seven hundred and twenty vehicles is an awful lot of traffic. Not only is it gonna impact Locust Street, but it's gonna impact King Street as well, because those are the roads that people take to, where they're going.
And our highway department, the super, new superintendent, you know, he's reviewing all of that to see what type of, what needs to be done for current, what needs to be done for future. And until we receive his, his letter, I really can't comment on that.
Because it is a downed road, and some places only nineteen feet across. So, it's, it's an awful lot of traffic for a small area.
Okay. Is that it for now?
At the moment.
For now?
At the moment.
Yes, sir.
Hey, one more comment. I grew up, you know, next to Lester, well, I grew up, I lived next to Lester Wyatt, long time, and he hundeth that way. And I worked with Jerry Kelleher on that project and everything. There's always been said that there's Indian, Indian burial grounds up there.
There is.
Yeah, there is, so, has that been?
Thank you.
Has that been gone after?
What, what happened there to, to put that one to bed quickly is, Jerry, you'd spent a hundred.
What, what happened there to put that one to bed quickly is Jerry had spent $175,000 hired a historical firm out of Rhode Island. You go to the end of Paddock Road and walk in the woods, you see a bunch of square holes everywhere. About 500 foot off the end of the road is an Indian burial ground that's identified. They did what's called a memorandum of agreement with the Mass Historical, a woman named Brona Simon at the time. And it can't be disturbed and this, that, and the other thing. It was one of the oldest villages in this area. Their proposal is to not do anything at the end of Paddock Road that would develop that so that would all stay intact.
Put your light back on where Mr. Gallagher's talking about.
Right there.
So you are aware of that?
Yes.
That area there?
And I went through all that with the Historical Society back in, I guess, late 80s, early 90s.
Do we get, do we get an update on that?
He's still dead.
So you're, you're talking, you know...
No, it's, it's there.
Is there present that it's, it's going to be...
It will be, that will, that information will be listed on this plan and that will be a part of our approval process.
We have that site located.
It's located on the existing... Did you go, did you, you didn't go have to go through the MIPA process because it was already gone through, right?
No, we have to do it again.
You have to do it again.
Yeah, we did, and it's been done.
That's all been addressed.
Yeah, we got a certificate, yeah.
Maybe what can be done, seeing that it is a burial site, maybe as part of this process, we can ask that their concrete bounds or some type of markings be placed?
They actually forbid us to mark it.
We can't mark it?
No, because I'm afraid somebody will damage it and...
I take that back, Kareem Diggers. I, I don't know much about...
Yeah, they actually wouldn't...
...the history of old burial grounds. I would think marking it would be the safest way of not disturbing it.
Yeah, but then you know where to go. They may not want to.
But I guess, yes.
In regards to this topic, again, referring to the letter, it mentions...
Now, you keep saying this letter. What letter is this?
This is a letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. It talks about the Native American burial ground. It is suggesting that it's state temporary 500, 50 to 100-foot wide temporary buffer area surrounding the burial site with high visibility, protective fencing, and/or hay bales with no trespassing signage. If any additional remains are discovered during construction, construction activities in that location should cease and the MHC should be notified immediately.
Right, well, the area that they're showing, that's in part of the preserved areas. So they're not even doing anything around there.
I think that's in construction phase.
That's, that was all part of the memorandum of agreement. So that was basically an approval letter. It was already addressed.
The letter that she's reading is probably the certificate that MIPA issued. We filed an ENF...
Right.
...a year ago if we triggered certain thresholds, impervious to MIPA thresholds.
My question is, because we're at close proximity to Titicket, which was a Native American settlement, there may be more human remains or artifacts. They say that construction has to stop. How do we know that construction will stop or they'll just kind of like put it aside and just go on their very way?
Again, similar to the turtles, these are things that are way beyond the scope of the planning board. I mean, this is all his Mass Historical stuff, so if you have issues with the turtles, the dead Indian, any of that, you've got to go to the people that address those issues.
Well, I think maybe, maybe not addressing you, but addressing to them what, you know...
Well, but that's not what we're here for. What we're here for is, and again, those are all great points, but I think that might be a different phase or maybe it's a, a, some type of, I don't know how they would have an inspector be on-site. Who would do that? It's almost going to be if they, the excavator company that's in there doing the excavation, if he digs up a bone, then it's up to him to report it, I would say. You can look at me like that, but unless you want to stand out there, then you'd be trespassing.
Could really be Jimmy Hoffa.
I'm not sure. You had your hand...
Cheers, sir.
In regards to development and, and you have definitely passed or in the future that you want to do in regards to the school board and the school committee, the impact on our system and the children that will be, you know, inhabiting these households, how have you handled that or who have you spoken to? What's the research in that regard?
Well, again, this board, that's, that doesn't fall into our, we're here for land development, making sure that the roads are constructed properly and...
So where does that, where does, when is that researched or where does that go?
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
No, the school board, you know, entirely separate division.
So our impact on our schools and these children who will be coming in...
Someone has land and they have the ability to develop it, it's up to the school committee to, you know, make room for the kids.
That's what they're paying, you know, taxes for, been paying taxes. The people that'll be moving in will be paying taxes just like we do.
Not that a house covers taxes, you know, if it has children in it, because that's a losing proposition, as everyone knows, but that's part of being a town.
Okay, yes.
At the end of Paddock, when you suggested that, not just, but they're suggesting that they're going to move the existing pump house into their own property, but their own property at the end of Paddock Street is a, the Indian burial grounds, and they have a sewer crossing that exists there that they know about, so they have to put a sewer crossing across the line that's already at the end of Paddock. So they'll be up in that section of Indian burial ground. I don't know if they'll probably monitor themselves, but I mean, that's why the sewer crossing is, you know...
Well, again, that's, well, before the process, before they even get to that point, that will all be identified on the plans. We will have, our engineer will have it in his report, Highway Department. So we can't, it's kind of hard to comment on that now, when and if we make, have an approval process, that at the very end, when we, when we decide on this, that could be a condition which basically will take what the Indian...
Yeah, that was all where the sewer crossing is going to be. Paddock Road used to continue and connect to the subdivision road. The sewer line is going to be where that road was proposed, and that road was proposed to avoid the Indian burial ground. That was all part of the prior approval. Now the road's just not going to get built. The only thing that's going to be put in is the sewer line, and I don't think you're looping water, are you?
No.
Not there. The sewer line was, was approved by the commission.
Yeah, that's already been approved.
Year and a half ago, the crossing, and on that plan, it clearly shows the Indian, the Indian burial ground several hundred feet away.
With the buffer.
Yeah.
So that will, again, that will all be through the process, through the plans.
They used a new word at the sewer commission's meetings, and they use something new called the dirtbag.
A dirtbag?
Yeah, with the hay bales and everything else was, I'm just letting you guys know that when you hear that word, don't be too, think it's too comical, huh?
It's a siltsuck.
Hay bales. Something new.
Siltsuck. The round ones.
The round.
Yeah, it's just the round siltation area.
Filter mittens, siltsuck, yes.
Yeah, we're proposing.
Strong, yeah, strong water.
All right, so is that, oh, yes, sir.
My name's Greg Windsor. I live on Locust Street. I had a question about the sewer line that I was trying to be putting in. I assume it's going to go, it's going to loop around existing houses on Locust.
The, now, are you talking about the current line that they're putting in or the...
The one that they're going to build services area.
Okay.
So the sewer, sewer will be located, it's a gravity sewer system that ultimately flows to this cul-de-sac at the end of Road B. At that point, there's the cross-country sewer easement where that sewer crossing will continue to Paddock Road. The sewer on Road A will drain down, cross an easement here to Road B. This side of Road A will flow in the same direction and down Road B.
So where on Locust Street is the sewer? That's what he's asking.
There's no, we're not, we're not connecting to any sewer on Locust Street at this time. It's all self-contained, and the only connection point to the existing municipal sewer will be at Paddock Road.
So, so Locust Street, Chris, Locust Street has no sewer?
What, right now, there's a proposal to bring the sewer from where these lots are out to where the roadway is here with their first proposed entrance. That's a man named Ron Turrowitz that owns this vacant land here, so he's going to sewer that. The sewer extension they're doing now is only going to here, to those lots. So from that spot to this spot, they're not proposing any. We were talking about it with Highway when we had kind of a pre-construction meeting, and we'd like to get the sewer commissioner on board possibly to finish the whole road. And in doing so...
But that's the point. My sister's done.
Yeah.
It's still going to have the situation...
Where you guys all have, yeah.
...now of about 20 houses with no sewer. Surrounded by everybody else that has sewer.
All right, so now, I would, I would suggest, those 20 houses, I would suggest that you go to the next sewer department meeting because that is something that, like Chris said in our meeting that we had on this plan, it was brought up and discussed, we can only recommend, Sewer Department is the one that has to put that forward.
Right, I understand that.
So it's common sense, and that's why Chris said it was brought up, and hopefully the sewer commissioners will, will be on board with that. This whole area is going to be repaved, it's going to be, you know, hopefully, a lot of improvements are going to be done. And once it's done, to have to dig that up years down the road, you know, we made a commitment in Rainham, and I think everybody would agree, that we agreed to sewer as much of Rainham as possible. And this is pretty simple to connect point A and B within, you know, I don't know, 500 feet or 1,000 feet or whatever the, the space is. And if we're not going to do that, then I, I think it's a, it's a, a disjustice for the, for those people that live there. It's just not fair.
The reason I asked is when I stood at town meeting when they did the phase, North Rainham phase, and the sewer commissioners said their plan all along was to do the people that live in the section where I live when they developed this, and that appears to be what's going on.
Okay, so, again, I would suggest that you and, you know, your neighbors go to the sewer meeting. It's in front of the planning board now, and now's the time to have all of this, you know, put together as some, a package, if you want to say, that it gets, it gets completed. We don't want the road to be dug up two years from now after this is completed. Yes?
On that stretch of Locust, who would be paid for? The town or...
The one, private developers doing that first piece right there.
You could just, you know, talk to the sewer commissioners and see if they'd be willing to participate. There may be monies still available on the article money, but it would be, you know, typically, a sewer project is town, you know, built by the town, 25% of the cost gets distributed among the people on the route, and the 75% of the cost gets paid through general taxation. So there'd be some sort of betterment fee associated with it, similar to what's going on now on Locust Street and Judson Street. But in this case, it'd be a developer's supposed to pick up the one portion. Something might happen through negotiations here, or like Dan said, go see the sewer commission, start getting the ball rolling.
I'd do that.
All right, I would do it again.
I'd do it again.
And again, I...
In fact, I think I saw a petition at some point lying around.
This is, this is in front of us now, and I think it would, I think it would be even that much more important for you and your neighbors to go to the sewer department because it's in front of this board today. So we will, we will do and we will recommend everything that we can do on this end, but I'll tell you right now, if we don't connect from that little section, it would be pretty embarrassing for us to spend millions and millions and millions over 25, 30 years, and we're not going to sewer, you know, a few houses that we, that we can very easily. So that's how I feel about connecting those. It's a, to me, it's a must. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to move on because we're going to have several meetings on this, I can see. Yes, John?
Yeah, just one more quick question. I know that in doing research and preparing for reviewing this project, we also, you know, Chris mentioned the bond money that was left over from other things that could be used for that turnaround of Paddock. We also have some funds that are left over for improvements to Locust Street from Whipple Will Estates. So that's also something that may be available as we talk about potential mitigation. We also have funds available.
Now, we do have a, we have a public hearing at 6:25, so we're going to, we're going to look at continuing this and giving the applicant a chance to go through all of their issues that, and address them with the town engineer. I would suggest that our next scheduled here meeting is October 16th, and...
Is that in that time?
No, I would suggest it would be like a month.
Okay, so Maureen, what's that, November?
November 6th and 20th. It's a meeting on the 20th.
November 6th.
Yep.
And I would say, let's put it on for the same time. Well, let's, I won't be here on the 6th.
I'll be in Boston business.
So you want to go? Yes?
We do have, there is the mulling rule where a board member is allowed to miss one public hearing of a project as long as the rest of the board agrees, the applicant agrees, that he's allowed to catch up on the information.
Did the town adopt it?
That's up to Henry.
Did the town adopt it?
That's a good question. Did Rainham adopt the mulling?
You did.
Yes.
Chapter 39, 23D, so you did adopt, because that's the, that's the state statute.
Okay.
So you did adopt it? Okay, but it would have to be up to the member, there's the certification that you have to form, you have to, so you've done it before? Okay.
Keep it on the 6th and catch up on it.
November 6th.
Okay.
At, we're going to do it the same time, 6:10. So November 6th at 6:10, we will be back discussing, and hopefully we have and they have worked through a lot of conditions, a lot of issues with the town engineer.
And there'll be no other notification other than what we just gave you now.
Yep. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to move out of my spot because you have, and then I'll, I'm not leaving, I'll just leave this here and then I'll finish off. Public hearing, Church Street subdivision and modification to the TDR special permit.
Is this the 6:25 hearing I'm reading?
It is.
Public meeting notice in accordance with provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48 and 41, Section 81T and 81U, and Article 17, Rainham zoning bylaws. The Rainham Planning Board will hold their public hearing on Thursday, October 2nd, 10:14 at 6:25 PM at the Rainham Jefferson Memorial Town Hall, 558 South Main Street to consider application for approval of a definitive riverfront estate. Three lots on plus or minus acres of land on the east side of Church Street in an application for special permit to amend a special permit granted on November 19th, 2008, to reduce the number of lots shown on a TDR yield plan from 10 lots to seven lots. Application submitted by the Riverfront LLC, Daniel J. Andrade, Manager. Locust is at 513 Church Street, Assessor's Map 18, Lot 19, Rainham. Copy the application and plan are available for viewing at the town clerk's office. Anyone wishing to be heard or interested in this supplemental should appear at the time and place designated. Rainham Planning Board, Daniel Andrade, Chairman, published in the Taunton Daily Gazette on September 16th and 23rd of this year. Bill Attorney, Edmund Brennan, who's here?
Hello, Mr. Brennan. First of all, could you quickly tell people where we are?
Sure.
And then tell them what has already been approved and what you are wanting to change to.
There's a preliminary matter, and we don't have to take this up now, but I just wanted to have a letter that I'm requesting some consideration on the filing fees and the review fees. It's going to be a type of subdivision this is, but I didn't know if that had to go in at this point in time, I just don't want to lose that opportunity.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board.
My name is Ed Brennan. I'm an attorney with an office at One Church, Green and Taunton, and I represent the applicant, Riverfront LLC, he's the owner of the property. We all know this property has the winery on Church Street, on Church Street Winery. The board may recall, and the neighbors who are here tonight may recall, that in 2008, this was before the board at that time, and we had petitioned for a special permit for a transfer of development rights. There was a whole process that we went through that was very similar to what was up at the last meeting. last meeting, and it's not. We went through a process that was kind of similar to what was up, being discussed in the Bassett Knowles Estates, where you, you file a plan, and it's called a yield plan. And the yield plan determines what this property could be used for under conventional zoning. How many lots could this property be developed into if we came in on a traditional subdivision and built it out in accordance to planning board's rules and regs and zoning? We, excuse me, we went through a series of hearings, the plan was presented as a 12-lot subdivision. At the end of the day, this board determined that you would agree that we could develop it for 10 lots under conventional zoning. There was a little bit of discussion about these other two lots out on the Riverfront, and the access through this high point of property, and we felt that eventually, we could probably go through the process and, and get two house lots out there, but we didn't push that issue. We agreed to take the 10-lot subdivision, or 10-yield lots, under the subdivision control law. Now, what your, your Section 17 of the zoning ordinance in Rainham, which addresses the transfer of development rights, that's where this special permit process is set forth. So, once we go through the yield plan, and we show the town or the board what we could build there under conventional zoning, then that's how you determine what, how many certificates, transfer of development rights certificates we get. So we had 10 originate from this special permit that granted in '08. Now, keep in mind, the lots that front on the street were excluded from this. There was five or six Form A lots on the front street that were not included in this transfer of development yield plan. Now, in order to go through this process, the landowner has to agree that the area where these TDRs come from, meaning these 10 lots, has to be used in a particular way going forward. It can never be developed for residential housing use again. It has to be put into some type of open space conservation restriction. It is allowed to be used for agricultural uses, but this whole process cannot come to a conclusion and these transfer of lots be available until we come to an agreement with the town on how that property's going to be preserved. And there are a number of different options to pursue, and they don't, that doesn't have to be determined now, but it has to be agreed upon, that that would be, you know, conservation area, open space, or agriculture, cannot be housing. So, that's what the board previously approved, issued a special permit, I believe in November of 2008. Now, of course, that was a very important time as far as real estate market and housing goes, because everything pretty much went on a slide at that point. So this has been sitting there, and it has not been developed in any way yet. So, what we're asking the board to do, there's two hearings before the planning board tonight. One is for, to modify this plan, and the other is for an approval of a three-lot subdivision under conventional zoning. So, here's the yield plan from 2008, and the next plan will show, the area will show the modification to the yield plan. And what we're asking the board to do is to allow us to take three acres out of the 27 or so, that was the 28 acres, take three acres out of what was going to be the open space, and allow us to use it for a three-lot subdivision. So it would reduce the amount of space, but it would all, and it would result in three lots coming in off of Church Street behind what we have for the Form A lots. So, that, that's the modification to the yield plan. Now that would reduce the number of transfers from 10 to 7. So, we're, before the board had approved 10, this would reduce that to 7.
Did you not have 10 places to go?
We haven't even tried to place 10.
I thought you took, you took three out already.
We took three out, that, that's a nice plan. That's right.
So the 12 became 10.
Well, the 10 became 7, and the 7 will become 4. Because we'll use those three on the frontage lots on Church Street. All right, so if this all goes together, everything has to fit together. No, we can't do one piece of this and not do the others, because we certainly cannot commit to a preservation of the open space if we don't have, you know, all the TDR certificates in hand. And we don't want those TDR certificates in hand unless we're confident we can use them somewhere. Otherwise, we've restricted the use of this property in the future, and then, and essentially depreciated the value without being able to get anything in return. So, right now, we're trying to, and I think we're comfortable if we only had three of those TDR lot certificates left, that we could find homes for them, but certainly, we're not comfortable carrying around seven of them and restricting this property.
Do you have four left or three?
We have, well, we had seven, we've used three, we'd have four left, because we've used three out front.
And that would be the limit of the development of that land perpetually, would just be?
These three. Well, I'll show you the three.
There's a lot line in the middle there somewhere.
Well, here's the, what's in orange is what would come out of.
So that bigger piece would be cut in half somehow?
Well, no, not in half, it's, this, this corner comes off it. So if this is approved, what you have here, this is the subdivision plan, which, and I've color coded it to show where the TD, the TDR open space would be everything that's in green. So that's still 24 acres of open space.
So where's the fraction you just took out?
Right here.
That's the three lots.
That's correct. So that used to be in this 24, I made it 27. Now we're taking out about three acres, making it 24.
And that's strictly because economically it's not feasible to have seven sitting out there?
No, we have to get some, yeah, we have to get something more out of this property in order to restrict the back pot perpetually.
And this was not going to be a deed to the town? This is going to remain in the LLC or?
I, well, that's yet to be determined. I mean, the intent, the intention is to, to keep it, and maybe, you know, the hay fields, I think, could be used. There's some agricultural use that could be put on this property, but we haven't made the decision yet to not to own it, but we are willing to restrict it under restrictions. So, this piece right here in orange is what we're proposing to take out of the original yield plan. So there's the orange piece, it goes from 27 to 24 acres out back. And then you still have 15, 1,588 feet of frontage on the Taunton River, that will be under the conservation restriction. And part of the TDR plan is to have a public access route down to the river.
So you're still not giving, that's your.
I'm sorry?
You're not giving that, please.
Oh, yeah, that, that, no matter what, the town gets that.
Is it on the plan?
Yeah, right here. So, you know, the ownership of the 24 acres, the LLC may keep it, subject to the conservation restriction, or not, depending on, you know, the future. And then, the, the public access is here, the 1,500, almost 1,600 feet of the river is here, the three-lot subdivision is just right here.
Is the access available at this point?
This is all uplands, so, you know, I suppose you could walk through there. But the road, a road has to be built, a gravel road has to come in off of the end of the new proposed subdivision road. We have to construct a gravel road with a turnaround and the path down to the river.
Is the turnaround?
Fire Department, HD 20?
We haven't got to that point yet, and I can't answer that question, but I would assume that we'd have to accommodate safety tables. So, you know, that's the overview, the three lots would be one here, one here, and one here. So you'd come in.
That lot, the lot in the back, or, or, no, out of the three lots, that lot. Lot three. How are you getting there?
All right, the road comes in.
There's a road here, right?
Comes in here, and you take a left. Actually, you take a left.
And, what, where's this at? It's just tough to see.
We got a hammerhead right here. So there's one lot, the road would come down straight to service this lot, and then it would take a right to service the other two.
Okay, the road that's going to service those two lots and lead out to the?
Yeah, it changes from asphalt, 22-foot road, it goes down to a gravel road at the end of the last house.
So 22-foot asphalt in front of those two houses?
That's correct.
Sidewalk?
No, no, that's in the waivers. The, the, the water would shed in the northeasterly direction, the elevations are such that the water will go down off the road, through the lots, and down towards wetlands. We're not proposing to construct any formal drainage or sidewalk, because it would only service the two lots.
Well, but you're going to have the public access?
Right here.
And people are going to drive to what point?
There's going to be a parking lot, turn around here.
Okay, and after that, they have to carry their kayaks or whatever if they're using the road?
Correct.
So those roads would be, remain private but have public access?
Correct.
It's only two feet.
And, and the gravel, and the gravel, they'll stay private, because we're not proposing to construct them in accordance with the, you know, standards of the subdivision control law. Constructed pavement, pitched and all that, but not all of them, we're asking for waivers from that, because we're only going to service three lots with it. But it will provide access to the, to the dirt road, the cul-de-sac, to get to the river for the public, so it will be 22 feet wide and paved.
And how many parking spots?
I haven't laid that out yet. I mean, I'm not sure it's, you know, that's all up to discussion, I guess, as to what the, when we negotiate the conservation restriction and the public access, or maybe it's something that this board wants to get involved in. We haven't laid it out, and, you know, whether it should be square or cul-de-sac, I'm not exactly sure. But the key is, at this point, to show and commit to public access, recreation, for recreation use and parking area and access down to the river.
So, you're saying roads can remain private?
Yes.
Who's going to maintain it?
The lot owners are going to have to, up to here.
If I was a lot owner, I wouldn't want to have a private road that I have to maintain and have the public driving through there. You know, when something happens to somebody out there, they're going to blame my road and, I mean, usually, I, for something like that, I like private road, but I, I'm concerned with the amount of public usage.
Then first time, especially with lots in the yellow. Then you have no one taking care of it.
Right, right.
So who's taking care of the yellow part?
Well, we'd be on private, you know, maybe it has, maybe we would have to put a portion of this over to the town, so that the town will.
Which is where we mentioned.
Now, we can't, the difficulty is offering the new subdivision road over to the town as a public way, and bill, and asking, getting the amount of waivers we're asking for, because would the town accept it as a public way as waived? We feel that it's perfectly adequate for the three houses that we're going to serve.
But again, let's point that, it's not just three houses, which is coming, it's going to be using it. So when you say three houses, that's not, and when you're building, you're not going to do a strict, you know, HD 20 gravel type thing, you know, it's going to be upgraded, maybe not to regular standards, but I think you mentioned that also.
But we are, it's not like we're not suggesting that it be inadequate to accommodate access to there. I mean, it's 22 feet wide of the pavement, it has the pitch, you know, we'll figure out how the drainage is, is not going to be flooded out based upon the elevations of the land. So the question, I guess, would be, if we, if we were builders to less than the standards required by the subdivision control law, would the town ever accept it?
Well, that's going to be for town meeting, but I'd certainly get a feel from the highway department.
Are you thinking more of a liability point of view? I mean, you're going to have people on, on your private land? That's kind of.
Who's going to want that?
You know, keep, open yourself up. It'd almost be cleaner if you ran this straight down this lot line and deeded it to the town, if there was enough frontage to do so.
Yeah.
No, I was going to piggyback on that and say, when I was with the town aware, maybe of a lot of situations like that, where they have a lot of private roads that go down to access water, and there are disputes all the time over, I can't access the water because this probably goes over this land, this guy's land, and he's blocking in, and it can lead to, it can lead to.
Those old paper streets will often wreak havoc to neighborhoods, but this would be a situation where, just like we would have to give the town an easement to a detention base or something, to give the town an easement to the public access, so that.
Is this stuff you need to look at?
Well, we have to give some thought to the, the private ownership with the public access. I'm not sure that isn't some, isn't something that exists under other circumstances.
Maybe it does.
And that would be the homeowners' issues. I mean, maybe they would have to have a liability, a liability policy from a homeowner's.
That's probably no different than a serious amount of trade arrangement.
Why would you want to sell two lots, three lots there, making it harder, you know, to sell them? Would that affect the sale?
We'll, we'll think about it, and we'll talk about it. That might be what we have to do.
Okay. Are you through with your presentation? Just like to take some questions, a few?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions for Attorney Brennan? Yes?
Yeah, one.
Name and address.
464 Church Street. I'm almost over, just to the, to the edge of the winery, on the right-hand side, beyond the church. On the second house, after the church. That originally, from what I understand, was, as you said, a 10-lot subdivision. And you took, so you're saying three, so you took seven of those away permits to somewhere else. Am I right or wrong?
Yes, well, we, well, use 10, they approved 10.
What I'm saying, you took seven of those permits somewhere else.
Not yet, we've only moved three on paper, because the three have not, the three lots, the three coming out of the 10 have been shifted over to the front, so that the six lots on the front could be nine. Okay? This is where three went. Now we're going from 10 to 7, so we're losing another three, they actually does four.
Well, all right, so now you're, now you're, now you're down to three, right?
Down to four.
Well, according to the letter, I got three, I believe, but whatever. So what I'm saying is that, okay, you're going to put the three lots up front, I've been there for 32 years. I'm not new to, to the neighborhood, all right? So, what I'm saying is that, one, what type of home are you going to put there? If you do.
Single-family residential homes. The lot sizes on these are, I mean, these are not small lots. The TDR bylaw allows you to go down to, allows you to go down to 20,000 square foot area. The lots that we're proposing on the street are 26,000, 27,000, 27,000, 32,000, 23, 22, 32, 24, and 26. So they're all, you know, perfectly acceptable sized lots in excess of what the zoning bylaw requires for TDR.
Is it lack of frontage that you don't get another lot?
No, we've used all the frontage.
I don't see a little.
But, I'm surprised you don't have another lot based on the square footage you just provided.
Oh, because it's the depth.
Okay.
It's the depth, not the frontage that's picking up the area. We're right on the money, you know, there's probably one or two lots that are over the 100, just to use up the excess, but for the most part, we're right on the money at the 100 feet of frontage, and we've just squared off the back in the picks-up area.
Yeah. Now, that's originally with what, 90 acres?
Oh, I don't know.
With Bobby DeCros, on the, yeah.
No, that's covered.
Probably like 35.
It was 35.
35, right.
It was 35.
Now.
Well, actually, I think it was, I think it was 30.
If you go be, if you go beyond the building that we just burnt, that's all conservation land.
What do you mean conservation land?
In other words, that's wetland.
Well, the wetland lines are all here, they're all flagged.
The wetlands, when Bobby.
There's the wetlands right here. So you have uplands, 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 uplands. It's a combination of wetlands and uplands. Matter of fact, if you look at, I think it's broken out on one of them, let me just check. Yeah, for example, in the back, now that's one particular lot, but for example, in the back on lot number three that goes down to the river, is 4.75 acres, 2.75 of that lot.
You couldn't build that.
Why?
Well, you, because I'm telling you, wetland, Bob, when, when Bobby put the winery.
Well, we're not building there.
No, no, what I'm saying is, when Bobby bought that land, because I grew up with him, all right, and he took a lot of that back pot, which was conservation wetland. him, all right, and he took a lot of that back plot, which was conservation wetland, and he got himself in a hell of a lot of trouble because of it. And he tore all the trees and whatever, but that's not my concern right now because that's all over the dam. My concern is, now, you're saying you're gonna build three homes in the front, that's fine. And then you're saying that you're gonna have a road going down to, to, over where you're pointing at the left, the yellow side?
That's the same road the houses were built on.
And then it... So in other words, you're just gonna open that up to create more traffic? We got traffic galore, we're almost a highway now, and you're gonna say that, that you're gonna allow that property to be able to say that people can just come in, uh, which I heard something about canoeing?
Well, it's not, it's not a road, John, it's a, there's a small gravel cul-de-sac where people would park, and then at the end of the cul-de-sac, that other yellow line, it's just a path, a walking path where you carry your...
Without, without going this route, we go traditional route, I think we have twelve lots there. We have ten for sure, uh, because the two in the back may, may not get, but we have ten for sure, and we have six on the front. So there's sixteen lots that are gonna go there regardless.
Could go there.
Could go there. It's, so, so this, we do it this way, we have nine, we have, uh, we have nine in the front, three, you have twelve, total of twelve lots.
So the only lot, how many lots, how many houses are you gonna build there?
Three? There's, there's nine on the street and there's three behind them.
Twelve total.
For a total of twelve.
You could build sixteen, so the net benefit to the town is four lots, new lot and then not built. Because you can't build on all of it, it's wetland, but it has enough hiding there to build four more houses than what you're building down. Is that accurate?
Exactly. And, and if we had, you had twelve out it, then there'd be six less.
So it's decreasing what you can do.
So the net, the net reduction would be four houses or six houses if we go this way.
Okay.
And that's the purpose of T D Rs.
Yes, Jared Napik, pastor first of Bethlehem, and also lot owner on the north side of the church. Um, I'm trying to figure out, how is it that a hundred and fifty feet of frontage is required if you have town water and you're getting a hundred feet of frontage for nine homes on, how's that work?
That's chapter, section seventeen of the town's zoning ordinance.
Can you, can you explain that?
They're, they're giving up the right to build on some lots and they're giving up the right to build on some land in order to have a higher intensity usage on some of the lots. Just like the people of the last, over on Locust Street, the same thing, what they call a cluster development, this is something different. The purpose is to try to save some open land and open space.
Okay, because in, in the last couple of years, the church took three acres or three lots and we had to be forced to, you know, a hundred and fifty feet, and it just kinda seems unfair that, you know, if you have, if you have more land and you can kind of conserve, you can work it where you can get more homes, but in other situations, when you have less land, you know, you can't give land away to the town or some sort of conservation, that, um, you have to be held to a standard where you get less homes or less lots.
Well, they could, they could build sixteen houses. They're only building twelve houses, they're giving up the right to four, where the town is letting them have less frontage, et cetera, for the town to pick up a bunch of open space.
The question is, is the trade, is the trade, is the preservation of the twenty-four acres, is that a, a fair trade-off for putting the houses out front and on three lots right here and keeping the twenty-four acres open? That's, that is a trade-off. Now, the board has already determined that we have ten T D Rs here. And that special permit already exists. What we're asking for is to reduce it from ten to seven and allow these three lots on conventional sized lots. You still get twenty-four acres of open space, you get public access, which is what the state wants and what the town has wanted, to the river, and you preserve all that frontage on the Ton River. So it's not, they're not just giving it to us, it's a trade-off of either four or six lots that we won't build on in return for preserving that and allowing a higher density in the front. And that, that's your bylaw, passed at town meeting in oh-two, it's been on the books for four, twelve years, and it was amended in oh-six or so to clear up some of the points. But this is not new. It's just, there hasn't been a piece of property around town like the winery that would warrant doing this. I don't think there's, anyone else has brought this to the attention of any other parcel of the town and tried to do this. Uh, but the riverfront L C purchased this in oh-six, they're going to develop the property. It's, the only way it's gonna stay open in the back is if we can develop it in this manner. Uh, but it's in the bylaw, we're not asking for anything that's not available to any other person in the town of Rainham if they have something worth preserving.
I, I just wanted to also mention that this is consistent with the town's master plan.
Where one of the goals of the master plan for recreation and open space was to increase access and protection of the Ton River, and this, this satisfies that, whereas if he developed this fully, you might not have that access, there might be a subdivision, it might all be privately owned and no one, no one could access the river.
This has been enthusiastically, uh, encouraged by Wildlands Trust, which is a group that owns probably tens of thousands of acres in southeast Mass. But to keep fifteen, almost sixteen hundred feet of the river, uh, to set that aside with twenty-four acres next to it in perpetuity, uh, I think it's a great accomplishment, uh, for very little trade-off and actually less houses on re, very reasonably sized lots at twenty-five thousand square feet plus for most of them, on a hundred feet of frontage. Uh, there are many houses in Rainham that are in fifteen thousand square feet lots from prior zoning, uh, that increased over time.
You have another question?
Yes, one other question. There was a, in the notice, there was reference to a special permit in November two thousand eight.
Correct.
Uh, was the land owned by the riverfront?
Yes.
It was at that time. Um, the church was never notified at the time, personally, that wasn't an issue for me. Uh, my neighbor wasn't notified at that time, and so when we got the applic, or when we got the notice for application and, and to amend the special permit, we're saying, we were never notified of an initial permit to begin with. Uh, does the town have a record of that?
Should have. Should have.
Did we verify that place?
We can see more ring after...
Yeah, you can check, I'm not sure you can do anything this many years later.
I think it's a ninety-day limit on...
Yeah, something like that.
But I mean, it should have been sent certified, is that correct?
No.
Oh, it wouldn't have been sent certified.
Yeah.
So, certified.
Well, yeah, most likely.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my name's Greg Daley, I'm at four sixty, uh, sorry, four fifty-one Church Street. I married Karen Aruda, so she's now a Daley. Just to clarify, I think, I'm gonna try to put it in layman's terms because I know these get a little tricky, and John's point to, he was clarifying the three acres. So there was a notice that was sent out for the public meeting, and what it was saying there's three lots on three plus acres that they're looking to adjust now, that's one part of the plan. The next part of the plan was the special permit for the additional reduction. So I think what he was getting confused with, as well as other people, and I know Karen's mother, was they were thinking that it was just down to three houses, that's incorrect. They're fixing one of those permits for the three acres, three houses, and then there's another special permit of a special permit for the additional seven lots.
Not really, but...
The way this seems to be worded...
Don't feel bad if it's confusing, if you're confused, because it's, it is confusing. And, and this is the first time the T D Rs have been used in the town Rainham. So what we have is two things before the board tonight, and the order that I, I presented it to was, okay, let's look at what the, the planning board approved in oh-eight, which was, this is called the yield plan from two thousand and eight. That resulted in ten lots of ten T D Rs. The first thing we're asking tonight is let us amend that special permit down to seven lots, so we're taking three out of there. And then take those three lots and use them somewhere else on the property of conventional sized lots.
So it's just transferring those lots to somewhere else on the property?
Yeah, the easiest way to think about it is we shrunk the, the yield plan by three lots. That's the easiest part. And we're using those three lots as regular forty thousand square foot, hundred and fifty foot frontage lots, uh, and, and taking them out of what would be under the conservation restriction. So it's two steps, one, amend the oh-eight special permit and then come back in, of course, we can't build those lots unless we have a subdivision approval. So the second step is to ask the board to approve the three-lot subdivision.
So basically, what it is, is, is taking these three lots that were on the original proof plan and making them identical to what they were.
That's right.
And then making the rest of this go away and be open space.
Can you, do you mind pointing out where the, say, the rock wall and, and I guess the Aruda farm would be?
Put up, put the three lots up there.
Over here.
This line.
Joanne, Adrian and Joanna.
That's my parents.
Okay.
That's the river.
So that then private access road technically would go right behind, right along that rock wall I was mentioning?
No.
Well, here's the property line, you're two hundred and forty-one feet, you're three hundred and thirty feet off of that property line, to the cul-de-sac.
Well, is that access thing located exactly where the cul-de-sac is?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
But this is, Rudy's property line's right here in the stone wall.
And is that a lot line that kind of to the right, yeah, right there?
This would be a house next to, next to his, and then there'd be houses down the road.
So the only other question, well, two other questions, is, is, you were speaking about the town's plan for open space, recreational space, but this is going to be, this is being proposed as a private road. And I don't understand with the amount of traffic, and if I was going to purchase a house there or we live there, why would we want public people coming to the back of our properties? And in today's day and society, with kids having, uh, too much time on their hands, funny things can happen, especially if it's a private road. So I, as a builder, if I was to do that, and I'd say, why is that worth, why do you even need to put that in there? If the landowners want to access the river themselves, let them go, I, I don't understand the purpose of that.
Well, the, the reason where it's in there is because one of the parts of this, uh, of zoning bylaw that allows for the preserving of open space, it encourages public use of that open space.
So on the open space that you're, and that's the other part, so that open space that you're leaving, the developer may keep that himself, the town may access, that's kind of like the wild card?
Well, it's not a wild, the only wild card is who's gonna own it. What's not a wild card is it's gonna be under the conservation restriction.
If it was to go to the town, then why doesn't the town then put an access on their property to the back river?
If, if, if the town owned that twenty-four acres, I guess they could handle it anywhere they want.
Because that's more of the open space and actually the prettier part of it.
And the way the law reads is, it has to have a restriction where it can't be further developed, but ownership can be the landowner, could be the Wildlands Trust, could be a bunch of different entities.
I think the only thing, obviously, it's happening, and I think it's, it is a benefit to versus what it is. The only other thing I would say is, is not where, I know the Butters are not big fans of having a open or a public access for people to use. The only other thing that if it ended up doing that, what's going to be the, uh, I would say, as far as the side setback, what's going to be left there? Is it gonna be shrubs, is it gonna be trees, is there gonna be, you know what I mean, a fence put up or to keep the boundary line from kids wandering into the farmland and, or, you know, anybody crossing boundary lines? Some type of open, you know, shrubs or trees or whatever it may be.
It's a mess right now.
We're, we're offering that public access because that's something we've been told all along the town wants.
Is that clear now or what's on the other side?
It's just...
It's just growth, overgrown.
From, that's...
From the winery, yeah, then it goes out stone wall.
Because I think at one point it may have been cleared.
Maybe a fence or something?
The other thing that they're doing, Chris, the type office or something like that, I don't know.
What, what is all, Chris, what is all of that, that, with the sewer, all right? They're, they're dumping tons and tons of whatever, what do you wanna call it?
It's torrent.
Into that land, what are they, what, what is that in there for?
That's all, we need a staging area.
Huh?
To build the project, we need a staging area. And when we were on the other side of forty-four, we used Joey Route, let us use Locust Street on the land. Now, on this side of forty-four, while the construction project's going on, we need a place to keep our stone, our gravel, our pipes. When the project's done next year, in the spring, that stuff will all be gone. But that's just a construction staging area, there was no other real parcel of land, um, you know, so the Selco approached...
No, no, we just let them put it there.
Yeah, Selco approached them to see if, approached, you know, Dan, see if they could use that as a staging area and let them use it.
So, I mean, on the public access, it's, we're offering it if the town wants it.
I don't know what people they do, I have no idea.
But it fits in with the philosophy, uh, of how, uh, preserving open space works. So we're offering it, the town may say they don't want it, I don't know.
Yes, do you mind, just from a business standpoint, if you had that many lots approved from a business standpoint versus what you're getting for it? Why wouldn't you go for that? What's their, just being a nice guy?
Not way off from, from the land use.
From land. If, if this plan...
That's, beats our regulations.
But that twenty... That extra open space to move around places, that's just, that gets in your planning and zoning though, that has to be agreed upon before the project, this project gets agreed to.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
So that open space has to be agreed to by both parties.
Right now, we have ten.
Yes, correct.
We find ten, you know, if we put this, we could run with this now, find ten of them around town somewhere and try to use them.
T D R doesn't have to be kept on the same site necessarily.
Oh, no, no, you can take...
You can take that, that, that's some other site that you, that the, that owner has control.
That's the other, that was gonna be...
Yeah, he can take those four chits and go to some other subdivision that's being built and...
As long as you have control of that.
I think it all, it requires water and sewer because of the size of the lot.
You could sell it to somebody.
So, but, but the whole, the whole, you know, the end of the day is, that space has to be left open or none of this makes sense. So if we can be at the same place by leaving it open, we will.
All right. I'm...
Where are we going from here? What do we need to do?
Well, we have the, you know, we have the...
We have to vote.
We have to vote. I mean, we, we have two votes here, that special permit requires a, a four-o vote, and, uh, you know, I think we're at the position where I, what we've proposed for the road certainly is adequate for those three lots. Uh, if the developer of this property wants to take the risk that people won't wanna live there if there's public access to the river, uh, that's a risk he has to take.
That's right, that's up to him.
It's a, it's a business decision.
Do we need the...
The question here...
Do we need, like, Bills and Thomas to look over the road issue?
That's what I wondered.
I mean, that's the only issue I would have them look at is the road issue.
It's, uh, I mean, it's three lots, it's pretty straightforward, it's basically a Y driveway.
But we have other people, we have the public driving around now. So I think the only thing I would spend your money on, or Mr. Andrews' money on, is just a limited review by Bills and Thomas on the roadway, if, if the board feels it's necessary.
Well, that's why I was wondering, has it gone out for review at all?
No, 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 we just started, this is on for today, we've got time to act as one.
Because we're, you know, because what we're essentially proposing to construct, uh, without having, without having drainage or sidewalks, it's really such a simple road construction plan with twenty-two feet of pavement. Uh, we have the cross-section here, we've got the layouts, we've got water and sewer shown, shown within the roadway. I'm not really sure what else they could review, uh, because we don't have the drainage structures and sidewalks and calculations that you might have with a larger subdivision.
Yeah, and they could end up rewriting the whole regulation book and saying this isn't there, that isn't there.
The other thing is, this went out, not this particular part, but the entire subdivision on the special permit was reviewed by Judith Mitch.
So the water's flowing the right way?[1759.61] So the water's flowing the right way?
The water's flowing the correct way.
All right, I didn't realize it was.
So there was a lot of engineering on this, and we still have, in order to build this road, even though it's small, you know, only twenty-two feet, we're within the jurisdiction of Concom, so we have to go there also. So, you know, does it warrant a review by Bills and Thomas? I don't know what they would look at.
Just the vote.
I know, but what are they going to look at?
They've never seen how you would build a road before because it wasn't there. So just limited to.
Well, they, the road came in the same place on the yield plan.
What respects for them to look at?
Oh, right there.
It says twenty-two foot road here?
No, that was a full subdivision. That was a full, this was.
We're not adding this full subdivision.
Grabbing less.
Full subdivision, I know, but the full subdivision has drainage and everything else, just a.
Correct. Flip back to the other plan.
Which one?
Yield plan?
Uh, plan, we don't look at. Telecode. Does anybody have a problem with no sidewalk on there?
I do.
This lady's been trying to get your attention over there.
Okay. I have a bunch of questions after, please.
Okay. Um, well, how, how many people think there should be a sidewalk and how many people, like, I'm just trying to picture how much usage is going to be by people just walking down that street.
Well, they're not going to walk down the street because where they're coming from, they got to park someplace. So they're not going to walk. They're going to take their car, go over the road that we don't know.
How it's being constructed. And then go into the holding yellow area.
I can tell you how it's being constructed.
But they could be.
Twenty-two foot with.
They could be dropped off in a car and have to walk, which brings up the sidewalk issue.
Three inches of asphalt and twelve inches of gravel.
But do we have room to put a sidewalk in on the inroad and then down the twenty-two foot road?
What pedestrians are going to be on Church Street?
Well, that's what I just said. Most likely, they're going to drive.
This is going to be similar to the three lot Pamela Drive.
Yeah.
Across like the town hall.
But you could have children being dropped off, teenagers who don't drive, by their parents at the, you know, Orange Road, dropped off there and then walked down to the river.
You could, but.
But that's why they, we have, that's why you have a parking area except for.
Yeah. Are, are people going to drive if they're leaving their kids off there or something? Are they going to drive to the cul-de-sac and drop them off there? There's no reason to drop them off out on Church Street.
I agree with you. I think they will.
The only attraction.
If you have a good terrain law.
The only attraction is the river.
Yeah.
It's not going to walk there and stand out in the middle of the field. It's not ball fields or any community like this.
No, I understand.
There's no active recreation proposed on this offer.
Kayaking, kayaking is a big sport.
Right. But I think they'll be on their cars if they go to that, that parking area to go to the river. The river's the attraction.
I agree with you.
All right, what does the board feel about a review?
Uh, my only point of review is on what's not done, and that's the twenty-five foot road and see what Bills and Thomas think about sidewalks. I don't really think they're necessarily rethinking it now.
Henry, does, does Nitch have, has Nitch ever seen this before? Does Nitch have a background for this?
Who did, who did it?
Nitch did it, wait.
Who did?
Nitch.
Nitch.
Maybe we just kind of bring it back and put it up?
Yep, just very limited, very limited, twenty-two foot roadway and holding area. Make sure it's done right. Not that I don't trust your engineer, whoever it might be, but.
Well, Chris and Russ, what do you think about that? Does this need to go out for engineering?
I mean, it's, it's a twenty-two foot road with a gravel base that's, basically has the same cross section as what the planning board rules and regulations require. It's three lots, so you don't need drainage.
Are you comfortable with it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty simple and straightforward.
Is it responsible for trash or is it responsible for?
Wait till your.
It would be all, they'd have to, I don't know what mechanism they'd use, but the three lots would be responsible for, you know, so that'd be who's going to plow this week, so let them fight over it. But, yeah.
I mean, trash is just like every other house in town.
Well, the direction we're going, I think, with what you want, it's going to have to remain private, and you're going to have to talk to your client and discuss liability and things and.
Those are all things he will have to.
If you decide that, that, you know, he wants, yeah, I'd rather have it public and not have to tricell in homeowners, then we might need upgrades over what you're proposing.
No, I agree with that. And the town may, when it comes time to bring the conservation restriction to the town, I don't know if the town is going to want that public access or not. I know they've asked for it in the past. That's why it's there.
Yep, okay.
They may say, no, we're happy just having open space and no one building on it, in which case, that's fine.
All right, review. Do we send it to Nitch for a quick review or do we trust Chris to review it?
I mean, engineering wise, there isn't much to review. You send it to Nitch, one of these guys is going to rewrite your book on what you don't have. It's not, it's not going to change.
The building expects it there. I don't know how they could change.
Yeah, they're not going to change. It's a.
Well, let's, I want everybody's opinion. What do you think?
Well, twenty-two feet is more than sufficient. That's what our regular roads are. It's, it's as big as a regular subdivision road.
Is it constructed sufficiently?
It's, it's got the same cross section as what the planning board regs require. And I think the issue's more, is this layout and design and open spaces, that's all acceptable or is it not acceptable? Would they rather just leave it that he has his ten or seven chits in the back there and, or if they want to use three of them here? That's kind of the question. And then have his four remaining and.
Well, I think the only question is, is Chris, Chris's review of the plan sufficient or do we need to send it out for review? And I just want, what do you think?
I mean, he says minimal review.
You say minimal review? Henry?
Minimal review.
Okay. Minimal review it is. And we're going to send it to Nitch for a review of what they previously reviewed?
No, just his new roadway situation and the overflow parking area.
But it's going, it's going to Nitch since they reviewed it before.
It's going to be less expensive, right?
Well, they, they did it all, they did it all in oh eight. I mean, deal with drainage, we had to do that. We designed a full subdivision for the yield plan.
This is minimal review. They're just looking at your two road you're planning and your excess road. Three things they're looking at to make sure it works in there, in there. That's all. Let's send it to Nitch.
Send it to Nitch with a maximum price of a thousand dollars?
Sure.
Okay. File, what should the filing fee be?
Filing fee for three lot subdivision?
What are we?
The, the, you go by your, you go by your book, or you go by the rules and regs.
Yep.
The twenty-five hundred dollar filing fee and then three dollars per linear foot of roadway or nine hundred and twenty feet. So the filing fee, if you follow, if you go to your subdivision control rules and regs, is five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay. Would the board consider reducing the filing fee?
What's, what's the request?
Reducing it.
We have a review fee. That's for the engineering.
That is.
That's the four thousand.
That's four thousand dollars for the review fee.
And then we've got the fifty-two sixty filing fee and the five hundred service permit.
I mean, the, the three dollars per linear foot for nine hundred and twenty feet, I would think that would be if it was going to go out. I, I'm not sure what you'd do with the three dollars per linear foot. I'm not sure with that because there's a review fee of four thousand dollars that takes care of your outside consultant. And then there's a twenty-five hundred dollar filing fee. And then the filing fee gets jacked up by another, you know, twelve sixty based on the three dollars times the nine twenty. Oh, no, more than that, more than that, yeah.
Your numbers are off.
No, I was looking at the four thousand. I was going up from the four thousand. It goes up from the twenty-five hundred to the fifty-two sixty.
Do you think that number's still wrong?
The, the planning board just reduced their fees back in January from what they were. So actually, the fees are half of what they were had.
These fees are half of what they were?
Yeah, half of what they were previously before January. So these fees have.
I would slash in another fifty percent on the fifty-two sixty, so I'd bring that down to probably about.
Fifty-two or fifty-seven?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-seven.
No, no, that's a, that's the five hundred dollar.
How come it says fifty-seven hundred?
Because five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars.
Five hundred was for the special permit.
Which is separate, so.
Oh.
They, they were put together.
So if we reduce the fifty-two sixty down to twenty-six hundred, that's a little over fifty percent.
And then you've capped the review fee at a thousand.
Yep.
Well, right now, we have.
Yeah, four, four thousand for this is.
The argument we've used, no, other four thousand, we've capped our initial review at a thousand. If perchance they come back and say, boy, you messed up real bad, we need to do more work, then, you know. But I don't see that happening. So I, I made a motion.
Okay, motion to reduce the review fee at this time to one thousand dollars.
No, 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 no. That we already did. That was for Nitch to take from the four thousand dollar we're holding for engineering to use up to a thousand dollars of that for our very minimal review.
Okay, and we're going to hold, we're going to hold the other three thousand, which we've received.
Now we have the sum of the fifty-two sixty filing fee for.
That's a combination of a twenty-five hundred dollar base fee plus three dollars per linear foot for nine twenty, nine hundred and twenty feet. So that's a combination of road review fee and filing fee.
So my recommendation was to reduce the fifty-two sixty filing fee down to twenty-six hundred.
And I'll second that. Russ, what do you think?
Thanks, thank you.
You're okay with both of those? Chris, you okay with both of those?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Backs up the room, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, he still has a question.
I know that. Yes.
Yeah, it's not over tonight anyway. It's going to go for review. Come back.
My name's Ray Corliss, five seventy-five Church Street.
Yep.
My property abuts, abuts on this side. Joey Route is on the other side.
Yeah, right here.
Yes, could you tell me why you're not building on the street and then behind it?
No, there's going to be house slots along the road as well.
I know, but why aren't they building there first? Are you going to just leave the brush in the front?
Oh, if this all goes together, then you'll see the construction start on the street lots soon.
Oh, you mean, you're not going to build just three, you're going to build all of them?
Eventually, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean now, when you start three, you got three lots you said you're going to build on. Now, if you start those three, what are you going to do with the property that sits in front of them?
They will probably get built first.
But you're not getting a permit for them, are you? You said you wanted.
No, there are, that we already have, those have already been approved. They're not part of T D I.
Basically saying you're going to build all.
We're going to build all on the street and then three right here.
So the three back are later, not first?
Most likely because you got to build the road.
We will give a permit to build all twelve.
Okay.
They can build in any order.
I think they're going for three right now.
They can build in any order they choose. We have no say over that.
Okay.
It pretty much comes down to if somebody comes and wants to buy a street lot or somebody wants to be out back.
I was confused. I thought they were just going.
It is confusing because we're here for two different things, you know? They mesh together, but they're separate.
My other question is, I agree with this gentleman over here about the border. There are stone walls, but it would be a great help if they would put a tree, a growth of trees along the wall as well to separate it because we've had privacy for so long and now we're going to lose it all. That wouldn't be too difficult to do.
Well, if you want to get together and split the cost or something, you can talk to them about it.
This, this right here is a, a house can go there, just like a house went on your lot.
Right. Oh, and all of them, all of them, yeah.
They're not part of this.
So you don't agree to any of that, okay?
Yeah, I'm not saying yes and no because it's not my money. I can't spend it.
There's just nothing in the planning for buffer?
No, not on Farm A lot, you know, I'm just, I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure. I'm trying to visualize what's out there now. Mark, is there anything on your side? Is there anything on your side?
A couple of trees. If there'd be more.
Just a wall and a few trees.
Okay, we're going to wrap this up. A couple more questions?
Couple more questions, right.
Hi, Charles Davis, one seventy-three Elizabeth Drive, Craneham, but I am representing the Board of Trustees of First Baptist Church. I'm concerned about, first, I'd like to know where you want to enter Church Street as to represent for the church.
It pretty much coincides. See, we don't, we don't show your building on the other side of the street, so. But where the road goes in now to the right of the old winery building, it's very, yeah, to the left of the winery, it's very close to that.
I'm very concerned about the traffic. Right now, we have traffic problems up there with that curb in the road and people coming around the curb, and we've had some close calls. And we increased that traffic at church time and other times funerals and that, you're going to have a calamity up there. We increased the traffic, we got a problem now, and it's only going, it's only going to get worse if we increase the traffic. And one other thing, I was just thinking, because I don't live there, I'm worried about, I'm sure you'll put that access road down to the line, and there's going to be a lot of kids going down there on bicycles and stuff. And I'm concerned about that narrow road with the kids on bicycles and that, just throwing my two cents for that. So my, my main, my main problem and the Board of Trustees' main problem is traffic.
Well, I hear you, but people do have a right to build on their land. And Church Street's a public way. If Church Street is not adequate, it's up to the town to spend a lot of money improving it.
I just wanted to call it to your attention.
Sure.
Could I direct a, a question back to the attorney?
The last one.
I actually got, I got a couple of other questions if I could please.
You better make it compound, son.
Okay. The, once you hit the access road, the cul-de-sac, the part that was shown in the yellow, could you bring that map up again, please? How, how large is that area? Yeah, the highlighted area, how, how, the highlighted cul-de-sac area, yeah, how large is that?
There aren't any dimensions on it.
I don't have any dimensions on it.
Probably about ten thousand square feet, basically, the size of the lot.
Eighty, eighty feet diameter maybe on the circle?
So, so how many, theoretically, how many cars could park down there?
It's not laid, it's not striped or laid out.
That's what we asked for the review for.
Oh, that's what, okay, what, okay, I thought the review was just for the roadway itself.
For the free time.
Okay.
We could take the public access right off of there, if the town doesn't want it.
Oh, just-
It's only there because the town has always wanted to be able to get to the-
No, I understand this, no.
So, if that public access is gonna cause a problem with this whole thing, you know.
Well, my, my concern-
I can leave it to the town fathers, they may say no.
My concern is what's going to happen is, I just wanted to know how much, how many cars could potentially get down there? Because Sunday mornings is a big recreational area, a big recreational time, so what's going to happen is if you have that area filled up, they're gonna park right on our church property. Now, we don't mind that, especially if they come to church, okay? But-
Isn't that probably what the church permission is, park on the winery parking area?
Uh, no, actually, well, actually, when we've had-
I think they did.
When we've had funerals, okay, overflow, things like that, that's, that's correct.
Yeah, on the winery, so.
That's correct, great.
I think so, yeah.
We obviously won't have that, but that's, you know. One other question, I think, I'd like to ask. Daniel Andre, chairperson, is that the same as Daniel J.?
Yes.
It is, okay. Is there, from the board's perspective, is there a conflict of interest?
Of course, that's why, that's why I'm not here.
Okay, is there, is there any plans for Mr. Andre to consider stepping down?
Why?
Well, let me finish. From, from the perspective, just in terms of, I mean, I don't know Mr. Andre, but I think it's been generally proper etiquette for years in the town, that if there's a conflict of interest, that people would typically step aside.
He did, he chairs up to-
Well-
We all have conflicts.
You mean like step off the board?
Yes, at the time, I mean, I think this is, this is a, this is a unique situation. What, I'm sorry?
Anyone who wanted to develop a piece of land would be on board.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not questioning-
The, the state government has controls by the Ethics Commission. The state government has controls through the Ethics Commission, that controls what we do and how we do it. The fact that Mr. Andre is not sitting on the hearing is all that he's legally required to do.
Okay.
All right, that's it.
We, we spend a lot of hours here, just to help the town.
I gotta get out of here.
About ourselves. Now, we're heading towards nine, so we need to finish up real quickly.
Well, when do you wanna continue this until? Your review?
I want to continue, I intend to, at the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Did you all hear that?
Nope.
Next meeting.
So, in other words, October sixteenth.
At six-fifteen.
Six-fifteen is what this is continued to, if you wanna come back.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tell Daniel it's a victim, Sylvia, which is general government, since it's not necessarily good as such.
Okay, what are, what are we doing, we got three people who need to get out of here.
Okay, let's do the abbreviated site plan quick.
The abbreviated site plan, is this guy, Bill Roses on Walmart?
Well, we could take this real quick, take him on-
Okay, six-six-one South Street West.
This is real quicky.
Six-six-one South Street West.
And we have several board members who need to be out of here, 'cause we have things to do at eight o'clock, so.
Would you like me over here or here?
Speak fast, just do it, do it quick, I gotta be out of here in like ten minutes.
Name and address, please.
I'm gonna see my son get first class on the boat.
Attorney William Maganello, representing Marame LLC. What we here this evening, sorry, my, my plan curled while we were waiting. What we're here this evening is to ask you, this board, to consider allowing an abbreviated review of this, of a proposed project on South Street West. What we're looking at is the parcel that's in between the existing bank and-
Harry's Auto.
And Harry's Auto.
Are you gonna put any additions on to the building?
No, what we're looking at is keeping the building in its exact same footprint, knowing, knowing-
What's the building now?
It's a, it's a residence.
Oh, that's the house at the end of this?
That's right.
Okay.
And keeping the building exactly the same.
Okay.
Not increasing pavement area, leaving the existing driveway, but installing a gravel or stone parking lot just in the front.
What are you doing with this building?
Converting it from a residence to a professional use, such as maybe a real estate office or an accounting or something to that effect. We're looking at no activities in the back, so we're not impacting the riverfront area, the two-hundred-foot riparian zone, or any activities within the one-hundred-foot BBW.
Sounds abbreviated to me.
I mean, I'm, I'm almost thinking it's, it's a waste of time to even come back, I mean, that's all he's doing.
I don't, does he have to come though, because-
Could we just waive it?
If he's changing the usage?
The parking changes it.
Just a little, you know, just a stone or, you know, a stone dust at the front.
If you file for abbreviated, it's pretty, it's pretty minimal.
What's the filing fee for that?
I don't, I mean, I don't think you can get a building permit or an occupancy permit without, without site plan. And I don't think we can just waive it, so abbreviated is the best we can do for you.
Sure, that's fine with us.
Make a motion that we let him do an abbreviated site plan.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nice talking to you.
Thank you, thanks for making me wait tonight.
Sorry.
See, look what you did to my plan.
Well, I hope you were on your alleyway.
Did everybody vote on that?
Yes.
Next up.
Thank you, folks.
For the record, your name and address.
William Rosa, I'm an attorney with an office at Ninety New State Highway in Carneyham, Massachusetts, appearing before you on behalf of Walmart stores. Obviously, most of you know why we are here, we are seeking a occupancy permit for the new store on Broadway. Since we last met, the most significant change has been that the roadways around Walmart one-thirty-eight have been paved, they have been striped. As far as we know, spoke to both John and to representatives of the highway, they were done in a satisfactory fashion, and so we're looking for an occupancy permit based upon the completion of that story. The one issue that is still outstanding is the issue of the sewer pumping station. Since the last time we met, we've created a sketch plan for the sewer department to review as to what we're going to deed to them for the sewer pumping station. Last Friday, Mr. Gallagher indicated that the preliminary plan that we had given to him was adequate. We're gonna now prepare an A&R plan for, for your review and hopefully for your approval. So, that is the only loose end, if you will, that we have remaining, is to formalize that A&R plan, complete some work that needs to be done at the pumping station, and then move forward to deed that property to the, to the town as, as we, as they requested, which was different than what we originally planned. The easement for Mrs. Murby that gives them the access from Broadway to the pumping station has been done, it has been completed, it has been recorded, so the question would be just to complete the punch list items that relate to the sewer pumping station and was-
So, you're here looking for a permanent?
We initially were, we are looking for a permanent, exactly at this point. We thought, given the amount of money that the town is holding, which is three-hundred thousand dollars for the completion of all the improvements that have been done, is more than adequate for what needs to be done at the pumping station. It would obviously be our pleasure if you'd consider reducing it, but if you said that you needed to hold it all and to make sure that was done, then that would be, that would be your decision, obviously.
When is your temporary?
It expires October seventh, so it's next Tuesday, would that be your Wednesday?
Well, it would be, I myself would like to see the pump station, and let's finish this, we said it many times. I think if we, if we continue, I'll give you an extension to the temporary for whether it be thirty days, sixty days.
Well, how much time does it need to finish?
Well, it's, the problem is, it's, since they came in for their first occupancy, first temporary, we asked them to do this work, and they haven't done anything, haven't even, haven't done a thing.
Didn't they have to wait for the roadway to be done first?
No, 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 all this stuff is off-site, that's open-
I think the easement, though, didn't they have to get her to sign off on an easement or something?
They could've done all the, like, there's no site work at all done around the building. There's no paved, there's a paved access that comes off the parking lot, none of it's been constructed. There's drainage that has to be done, none of that's been constructed.
How much time do they need to do it?
According to the email I got half an hour before the meeting from the engineer, they could do it in two to three days, but they should've done it six months ago.
Well, they did, so how much time?
I, if you don't get loam and seed and sod down this week, it's not gonna grow, you're done, the season's over.
Phil, is there any reason this can't be done in a week, and we'll review it in two weeks?
I'd be, I'd be less than candid with you, we, you know, we, though we are a very large company, and we have, we have, we have contractors and we have subs, and we, the contractor who was entrusted to do this has had some issues with sub. It's a very busy time of year, he has not done what we had asked him to do, and he has indicated to us that it would be realistic, given his workflow and the nudge we gave him this evening when we found out that, you know, the issue, that by the end of the month, he could have it buttoned up. But to promise you that we can do it in two weeks, I, you know, I don't wanna promise that and then be back and forth.
I've been, I've been nudging him for six months and-
I agree with Dan that, you know, we're gonna get a little bit better response if we discontinue your temporary, and not gonna affect you one way or the other.
If we do it for thirty days, is that sixty days, I'm, you know, so we're not doing this back and forth? If you wanna do it sixty days, well, you know.
Running into winter, so.
Right, well, it's gonna get, that's why I'd say, you know, this is October, November, if you're not done by then.
We're not done by November, Chloe.
If you're not done by Columbus Day, then you're not gonna get grass. The other issue, outstanding issue, is Lopes did go out and jet all the lines, and they were clean as a whistle, and then Carlson went back, lifted up all their structures, and there's mortar and rocks and all kinds of stuff inside the pipes and on the shelves, the drainage is even worse, but that's not my problem. But the lines have to be jetted, cleaned, cambered, and none of that's been done.
Mr. Gallagher, I've had a conversation with this week, this is the first we had known about that.
We've been going back and forth for a month now between, you call Carlson, they say, "Call Lopes, you call Lopes."
Is there anyone particularly dealt with at Carlson that we can?
There's some guy named Kevin, but he just gives me lip service, I mean, I'm not getting anywhere.
Obviously, we, you know, we're as desensitized as you are.
John's called and said we could get things done, and Andy Manny called and said, but they have no control, I mean, they're the engineers.
But that, that isn't-
So, I would make, I would make a motion that we extend the temporary occupancy permit for an additional sixty days.
Do we need to put dates in there, do you have a date to give us?
Sixty days would be twelve-seven, I know the, the current one expires on ten-seven.
And then I would normally-
With the thought being, is if it's done sooner, we can come back before you.
You can notify the office and- Normally, there's a rule, November fifteenth is deadline for landscaping, so I would suggest that if you're, if you're not, if you're getting close to that, you might have to put sod down.
The, the plan is to put sod down.
So, you know, there's not gonna be an issue for washouts or anything like that.
Yeah, no, the, the spec for sod.
Whatever's good for you, just do it right, and get it done, I, I understand your problem.
And we wanna be there inspecting this stuff when it gets done, so they're gonna give us a heads up, and especially jetting a line, 'cause they didn't call us last time, and then claimed it was done, and we weren't there, and it's a mess.
Are these construction capable with you?
This is the engineering firm, what's the? But he doesn't do the construction aspect of it.
Did they get a copy of the?
No. Bill, this is a-
Why don't you take a copy of the sewer letter?
I gotta get out of here.
Yeah, no, good. Motion made, no, motion made to extend it for sixty days, second it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, sorry for the-
Did you vote, Chris?
Yes.
Phil, anything else you need while you're here?
No.
Thank you, sorry for the-
All right, very good, thank you. Where is our, we signed invoices?
The stuff from Troy, which looked good to me, except for one thing, the fifty thousand dollars. Should that be paid to Troy or to ESKAP?
It was going to, Town Council reviewed how-
Bill, they said, and they said, okay?
Yeah. So, he reviewed them.
I got another couple minutes before we go.
So, is, are we, we okay with those two?
Yep.
Can we make a motion?
No, I think they have to, you know, I think they're for us to do, go back into executive session, or if they think.
Well, I checked, and we, we didn't have to go into it in the first place.
I didn't think so either, but. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the form of the letters having, as they have been approved by Town Council, and that would be the two letters dated October second, signed by Ron Troy.
And the second it?
Yeah, so Town Council had-
Yes, he worked, he worked on those.
Remember, we had talked about that when we were in our meeting? The Town Council was working on it.
Those, those came from Town Council, those letters came from-
Then we can do what it says on the law.
Yes.
Which is your concern, and to a lesser extent mine.
So, all in favor?
Aye. Could Dan second that?
Russ second it?
Russ did.
Chris signed minutes. Minutes for voting on?
No, they weren't.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of September eighteenth, two thousand fourteen.
And wait the reading.
Wait the reading. Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
We don't, if we have any correspondence with-
Real, real quick, 'cause we don't have a lot of time for plan and update, we did the minutes correspondence agreement with mitigation funds.
We need a certificate of action.
Certificate of action signed on Carlton Street. I guess all three of us are gonna have to sign it.
I can have Chris sign it, or Dan can override it.
Yeah, I'll sign it.
And then, real quick, 'cause our town planner has four minutes.
Okay.
Planning board fee refund policy amendment.
Uh, that's, for the sake of time and the lateness of the hour, that's the only one I'm gonna address, the other stuff I can address at the next meeting.
Who else had on the Buddhist time?
Yeah, that's just an update on something else, so.
Anything doing on the Center Street signal?
They're still working on that, they're close to done.
So, back-up refund planning board fee fund assignment, do you think things up there, so?
Anyway, in relation to the agreement that the planning board made with Mr. Williams and Mill Pond and the refund of his, of his fees, that brought up, that brought up a topic that needed to be addressed, and that is what happens in those instances when a plan doesn't go anywhere, never gets to the review process.
For eight years?
Yeah, or more. That brought up the question of, what if this happens again? You know, we really should have a policy in place where, you know, if, you know, when, when certain administrative fees come in and they're, they're submitted and deposited, they go into the general fund, and then they're out, you know, it's very difficult to recover.
I think ninety days is too short of time.
You think ninety days is too short?
Ninety days following filing of the application, shit, sometimes we don't even get to a third ninety days.
Well, we put it, we, we put in the ninety days, because that's, once they file it, it gets advertised, and this way here-
Yeah, 'cause the clock starts ticking, once it's filed with the town clerk, that's when the clock starts ticking legally.
Right.
To hold a public hearing and the board to act on it.
You made it non-refundable, we're taking people's money that may not get back to them, because we're sitting on our asses. They just think it's too short of time. There's no difference between ninety days and a hundred and eighty. When you look into the case of Williams, we're dealing with twelve years, you know, that, that's obscene, but, you know. I, I think if we just go from ninety to a hundred and eighty, it works. I don't know what three-point-four or three-point-five say, but.
Russ, how do you feel, going from ninety to one-eighty?
I'm just trying to figure out, so, what we're saying is, they gotta pay application fees?
When you, when, when anybody files for a public hearing, all their fees have to be paid upfront. If an applicant comes in front of us and asks, before it's even, before it even comes up, we open up the hearing, they ask to be continued. See, the ninety days would cover if the applicant came in and didn't ask to be continued right off the bat, like this, the one that we, Mr. Williams is. If they come to the board and ask for continuation, then that means there's an issue with that plan that they submitted, and they're gonna have to withdraw it within those ninety days, or have their, open it up, and that's the whole idea. They do have, the ninety days gives them enough time, I don't mind, you know, I, if Henry's more comfortable with a hundred and eighty, it doesn't, either way, it's not gonna matter, we just need something in there, so, so they open it up.
That works good.
It just gives us an opportunity for more people to hold on to their check before it goes into the general fund. That way, if something different comes up, or extreme comes up, like what happened here, it's easier to refund the money within that short period of time, but if that time elapses, then, then, you know, then you're out of luck.
Yes, yes, all right.
Would we actually be holding checks back, or, I mean, we're supposed to deposit them and then we can refund?
No, it would, it would be deposited and then refunded.
I thought it was something different.
But you don't turn it over to the town for a hundred and eighty days?
I'm gonna turn it over to the town.
Well, no, she will.
As usual.
Right, you will.
Maybe the town will hold on to it.
What it is, the town, it'll get deposited, but it won't get spent, and that's why the ninety days, three months, it won't get spent. If it goes too, too long, the money-
Goes into the next fiscal year.
Then it, then it would get-
Well, maybe we should leave it at ninety days?
Then it would get spent, and that's why, you know, Town Council had reviewed this, along with the selectmen, because it was their suggestion that this gets changed, and they had come up with the ninety days.
Yes, let's leave it then.
Because, yeah, if you start running into six months, then you're right, there is a danger that now those charges could overlap to the next fiscal year, and that money is gone, so. We wanna try and protect the applicant a little bit, but at the same time, there is a certain aspect of, well, if, you know, it's a, you know, cost of doing business to a certain extent.
And it, it will protect the applicant a hundred percent, the ninety days, he does have to come in front of this board within that period. So, he's either gonna ask to withdraw without prejudice.
Right.
Or have his public hearing, which is his, his right, so he has, he has a choice. What it's gonna do is, it's just gonna take, look at it, eight years went by, we didn't even realize, boom, eight years is, is, so this is gonna avoid that. And, and it really shouldn't be continued for six months, because if the applicant is not ready, it's not our fault.
That's right.
Take your plans back and go do your, go do your job.
But make them think before they come before you.
Yeah, and that's part of it, yeah, that's part of it.
Okay.
So, we will have to hold the public hearing unless we change our subdivision rules and things like that, we'll set that up.
Very good.
That's it, the rest, the rest I can report on at the next meeting.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? I think adjourned.
This was a marathon session.